Hey, welcome. David here. Another public study session with Claire Cow, who has been on quite a few streams recently and talking with quite a few other people that are in our common circles and had mentioned some ideas that she wanted to talk about. So I figured you maybe it'd be better to do a public study session than your conversation got more fact-based person. So good evening, Claire. I know you're in London. It's probably early in the morning there here in Detroit. Sabbath just ended. Okay, yeah, well, maybe more people are going to come, but as of now, it's just me and you. Yeah, so we just have the conversation and you will document it if no one watches it, you know, at least we document the conversation. If other people want to come on, great, you know, I put it on my Twitter. And we both put it on our Facebook, so anyone's welcome to join. And you know, I even put the link in the chat. I prepared a bunch of PowerPoints. Actually, I thought we were going to do it later in the week. So I didn't have enough time to really prepare the PowerPoints, but I at least have the PowerPoints to go through. Did you want to start with kind of what was the catalyst for you wanting to have this conversation? Something that like Eki Luke said on the Luke Forward stream? I rewatched, I think that was my debate with Eric Stryker where I had, you know, kind of said like, you guys already lost. And I'd also said that Jean-Française on the public space that I was saying that basically the white nationalists movements, at least in America, you have largely lost, you know, they lost like 50 years ago. And today they're marginalized, at least, you know, power structure-wise in the law. And that's why I thought we'd do it a public study session where it actually kind of like a frame games report where we'd actually look at the, you know, the history of civil rights and human rights laws and see that this stuff has been enshrined in law. Obviously, like people could revolt and there's democratic elections coming up soon. They could have minor changes on policy, but basically all this stuff has been enshrined with legislation over 50 years. And even if you're Republicans or people have their best dream election scenario, it's almost impossible, at least in the short term, that they're going to repeal civil rights or the legislation that's pushing multiculturalism. And I assume that's the same in England and Canada and even large parts of Europe where we're talking about decades of law that has caused the situation we're in right now. Yeah, here in the US, there's been multiple acts over decades and, you know, to the point where affirmative action, equal employment, disparate impact that a lot of the people in the alt-right complain about and say is actually anti-white, that, you know, that not only the law is not, you favor civil rights, but it's even to the point where it's became anti-white and the increase, you know, gay marriage, LGBT rights. You know, people like the Asians suing Harvard, affirmative action has had some setbacks, but, you know, largely affirmative action has been enshrined in US law. Yeah, there could be a pushback on, you know, politically that people are just unhappy about it, but to some extent they have very little power to do anything about it. And when we look at the history, like all what the African-Americans had to go through to create civil rights legislation, that, you know, whites could even be in that situation where they're talking decades of protests and movements to change this legislation that's, you know, been in fact for decades now. Behind the deplatforming and the arrests and even, you know, like Richard Spencer's and like he basically had to step down because he's facing, you know, Antifa, he's facing law cases, he's facing deplatforming, he's facing demonetation. And I think the, you know, the Charlottesville cases, so they're saying, yeah, we predict that these, at least there in America, we're predicting that these people are going to try to revolt or even violently. But the full force of the federal government, state governments, and even local governments are largely stopping them. Well, let's get straight into some of this historical background and slides. And yeah, I've been prepared some stuff on like, you know, the execution of Charles I and Cromwell. And you say that, okay, even a revolution, you still have to change the laws after, you have to pass new legislation. And we could look historically how this has been done, you know, it's not so simple. And obviously you're in England, maybe you know more about a lot of this stuff. And we'll talk about at least very briefly the Magna Carta and the execution of Charles I and Cromwell and the kind of the basis for the modern Western egalitarian human rights into after post-World War II and the UN's Declaration of Human Rights in the 60s with the main thrust of US civil rights legislation up to the present day, where there's just continuation of more and more civil rights legislation being piled on. Well, you know, I study Talmud constantly. Yeah, I mean, I study Talmud constantly. I was just reviewing the Book of Joshua and you, God forbid, the, your genocide of the Canaanites and the rabbinic understanding. And we could just spend a very little time with the ancient backdrop, or if you want more on the, you know, theoretical theological underpinnings. Well, I'm hearing something that people are saying they can't hear you. Let me just make check and see if that's a problem on. Yeah, I hear you fine, but I guess I'm checking on the hangout and they're not hearing you. So I must have done something wrong. Here, when you try it now.
Hello, testing one, two, three. Can they hear me now?
Okay, yeah, I think it's working. So I apologize about that. I had a setting wrong because Claire's on her cellphone. It's late at night there. Probably like, what time is it, like 3:00 in the morning?
Um, I think it's about 1:04.
I guess Brundle's on here too. Let me, I'll put the, I have a bunch of slides. So let's see if, you know, people want to talk. I'll even put the link in the chat real quick. If, you know, Brundle or something wants to pop on and, and I do have a lot of slides. So, you know, like I wanted to get to the facts of the issue and not just, you know, constant argumentation and bickering.
No, I wasn't bickering.
Well, I didn't mean that, but in a sense, but I mean, to a point where there's a certain, you need to get the evidence in fact base of what's actually going on, of what's underlying. And, you know, you have legal training. So we look at the origin of these laws and, you know, what's happening to, to the world. I have here the slides. Can you see them? The, you know, the examples of human rights and historical documents, the Code of Hammurabi.
That's right. I can see it.
And yeah, I'm not sure how you want to do this. You want to talk. I didn't have an, I was going to prepare this and do this in the middle, middle of the week. So I'm not sure if you want like a public study session where I'm just kind of reading a bunch of historical stuff, or if you want to say a few things and then we'll get into historical background.
Well, I think, I think we were talking about human rights in the kind of context of the Noah Hyde laws, weren't we? And I thought, you know, if you wanted to get, would you consider those human rights? I mean, the right to, to, you know, a fair trial. That's a pretty basic human right.
Well, I mean, you could consider the establishing courts of justice as the precursor to, at least biblically, according to the Bible, that, that was commanded to Noah and all of his descendants. The, you know, this, these concepts, and if you want to call that the origins of human rights, according to the Bible, or maybe even before Adam, in before the flood, there was some perspective of human rights, the Enoch or the commandments to Adam in the Garden of Eden or after the expulsion. But certainly the seven Noah Hyde laws, as we discussed last time, in theory, according to the Bible, is incumbent upon all of humanity because it was accepted by our common ancestor, Noah. Um, so, you know, I'm not, I'm not sure if we have to go over this stuff again.
No, 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 carry on. I'm just waiting for you to say the next thing. I just wanted to make my point about the, you know, the right to a fair trial, which I think is quite important and which I thought that Noah Hyde laws kind of addressed up to a point.
Yeah, I mean, it's not clear. And I didn't do this like a Judaic history. I have more, you know, generic history and
What is the Hammurabi code then?
Well, I didn't go into detail. I mean, I don't know. I mean, we could spend hours on any of these topics. We could do a few hour stream on just the Code of Hammurabi. But saying the ancients, obviously there were systems of human rights, of nationalism, of understanding what it meant to be a citizen from the dawn of creation, whether you accept the Bible's account for the history of the world or some evolutionary accounting. You know, the earliest tribes formed some sort of laws and that included like basic rights, you know, the concepts of do not steal, do not murder, how you deal with problems when they come up. And, you know, in membership, you're dealing with people that might be part of the in-group versus the out-group, such as the Judeo system, where there's a set of laws for how Jews deal with each other internally. And then there's a set of laws for how Jews deal with non-Jews. And then there might be a difference between your Jews when they're living under their own autonomy versus when Jews are under the autonomy of a different foreign nation. And, you know, if you want to discuss the Jewish aspect of it, this, I was talking more, you know, straight legal. And I wanted to get into US law.
I was just sort of, you know, I just mentioned it. I didn't really want to, you know, discuss it in great detail. And I'm looking forward to hearing what you have to say next about it.
Well, okay. So I mean, let's look at some of these slides and I'll try to get through some of the shorter ones just to clear them off. And generally, human rights starts, and what we know of it today, starts after World War II with the creation of the UN. And, you know, here we're talking about, you know, God forbid, all the horrible things that happened. World War I and World War II, World War I, there was, you know, trench warfare, poison gas, biological weapons. You have the creation of the League of Nations.
The Geneva Convention. That's part of human rights, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah. And so 1946, the creation of the Commission of Human Rights. Forty-seven is the drafting of Declaration. And 1948, the General Assembly of the UN accepts the Universal Declaration of Human Rights. And we could go into it and they're very complicated, you know, 48 states voted in favor, eight abstained, two absent, were absent and no one opposed it. So this was, you know, generally accepted by all nations. And yeah, I tried to find some slides just so we have, you know, people don't have to look at my face and could see, you know, different parts of it, you know, Article Five, freedom from torture, Article 25, right to healthcare. And there's a lot of things included in it. And we might get more into it. And, you know, seeing countries are still ratifying it. There's more countries now, you know, there's like 190 members of the UN or whatever. And so till today, you have new countries that are constantly ratifying these Declaration of Human Rights.
Uh huh.
And I didn't really prepare like an ancient overview. I give one, one other quick one, and then maybe we'll look at some of the English, you know, the history in England, which you might have more expertise than most of us. And you're here, here's a little chart, you know, 1750, before Christ, the Code of Hammurabi in Babylon. There's a lot of slave laws and it's similar to biblical law. You're like, if someone gets injured or if a slave gets injured or you're injured. And the Code of Hammurabi is basically tiered, where you have aristocrats and common people and slaves. And the law could be completely different based on who the crime was committed against. I'm not sure if you're familiar with that, but that predates the Old Testament and, you know, the Hebrew scriptures and the prophets. And if you're, you know, the anthropological approach would be that, you know, the Code of Hammurabi is the source for the Hebrew prophets and the codification of Moses. Although obviously that's not the biblical and you have, you know, Confucius. I don't know how much you know about Confucius. Have you studied that?
Um, well, he said a lot of things, but, but I guess what, what the most important thing he said was propounding the golden rule, you know, do, do as you would be done by. So, you know, which, which Rabbi Hillel kind of, you know, said as well.
There's all sorts of laws and how you treat other people and you feel the piety. And it's also like a tiered system for, you know, based if the person's part of your family or part of your tribe or a different tribe. And there's all sorts of code and law for how you deal with each other. So it's not like civil rights just popped up. And even as the Quran here, this is history. You have the New Testament, then you have the Quran, which obviously the Quran to a large extent is just a code of law. And the Quran has a lot of specific dealings for how do you treat in-group members and out-group members. And it's similar to Judaism, where the Islamic system is a duplicitous system, where the law regarding your fellow Muslim is different than a non-Muslim. And also Christianity developed into that. And, you know, the Magna Carta, which is considered a huge moment in the creation of Western law for, you know, basis of America, where the power of the king is limited. And then you have the Treaty of Westphalia in 1648. Are you familiar with that?
Um, I
You're fading out there. I'm not sure.
Oh, I'm a little bit.
Okay, yeah, because there's so much to cover, you know, all of these things could, you know, we could do a whole.
You rattle on then.
Well, I'm like, I'm just kind of reading over these slides, but I want to, you know, cover like a basis and then, you know, because we could do a whole stream on any of this stuff. I'm not, I only know the name of the Treaty of Westphalia by name. I don't know if you know anything about that. I might could Wikipedia it, but if you know anything about that, you could add in.
Um, no, no, I, I, I think I did know, but I can't remember now.
And obviously you have the, you know, Declaration of Independence, the English Bill of Rights in 1689, the French Declaration of the Rights of Man as Citizens in 1789, which is part of the emancipation of the Jews and the French Enlightenment. You know, Emancipation Proclamation, the 1863, after with the Civil War, Geneva Convention, League of Nations, you know, all these things, just that I want to give a, you know, background to historical. I'm going to check the chat and see if anyone is, has any expertise in this subject more so. And then we're looking to the creation of the UN in the, you know, the mid 40s that has a big precursor to this. Hystericity is here in the chat. Are you, can you see the chat, Claire?
Um, it's too small on my phone.
Yes, I mean, Claire's on her phone, so her regular, but your friend Hystericity is here. So here I was looking interesting, just a quick look at Cromwell and the execution of Charles I. If you're, if you're, I don't know how much you know about that history, you know, Charles I believed in the divine right of kings.
Catholic and that was, that was after the Civil War.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, 1628, Parliament passes the Petition of Right, said the king could not tax without the consent of Parliament. Charles rules 11 years without Parliament, basically tyranny, 1639 rebellion in Scotland against Charles because of trying to enforce the Anglican Church and overtaxation for his funding of his wars. And I think he gets executed. Is that what happened? Charles I gets executed by Cromwell?
Yes, he was beheaded.
You know, so I mean, people know this history. It's very important for the history of civil rights. And actually Cromwell's very famous to Jews because Cromwell's the person who relays the Jews into, into England. And I guess Charles could have considered letting the Jews back into England, but he chose to fund his activities through overtaxation of the Scots who rebelled. And then Cromwell largely, you know, funds, funds the government through allowing the Jews back into England. You know, attack the land sales. And I'm not sure if you're, how familiar, familiar are of, you know, the history of the Jews being re-entered. I think it was actually 1650 or I forget the exact year. And then you have, you know, was it Charles II replaces him and you have the new the new restoration of the agreement with England, William and Mary. Then you have Hobbes and Locke and basically the creation of modern society based on this overthrowing and execution of Charles I that leads to the, your modern British system.
Uh huh. Enlightened.
Yeah, the Habeas Corpus Act, Declaration of Rights, protected individuals against unfair arrest and imprisonment, unfairly high bail or cruel and unusual punishment. Toleration Act and Act of Settlement, religious freedom to dissenters, but not Catholics or Jews. The Act of Settlement kept Catholics from getting to the throne. Parliament increases in its power over the, over the throne. The Act of Union, united England and Scotland to Great Britain. And you have the creation of a constitutional monarchy, which might have been the first time in history. I guess that would have been Queen Anne.
Uh huh.
And yeah, I'm not an expert in this, so that's why I had to find these slides. Um, then you have the settlements in America and eventually, you know, macasque governments divided into branches to create checks and political power. And you have Voltaire and Rousseau, Diderot. And you know, these are precursors to the American Revolution. And the American Revolution is going to be a completely new system that although it was largely created for people of European descent and has slavery, that's a, you're really a phenomenal event in the history of civil rights and the system that we have today. I have so many of these slides that I, because I didn't really have enough time to prepare this because I'd been discussing with Claire doing this next week and anyone who's watching right now. And then it just turned out that we were talking is like, let's just do it right now. So I didn't have enough time to properly prepare and organize these slides or even to review this information enough. So I, I apologize. But yeah, I figured like, we just do it now because I don't know how many people watch these streams anyways. And I'd like to be more professional and have your better quality stuff. So I apologize about that. If anyone, you would like a higher quality presentation. Here's a more historical backdrop, you know, Magna Carta 1215 requires King John of England to proclaim certain liberties and accept that his will was not arbitrary. Maybe the Statue of Collet in 1264 gives privileges to the Jewish minority in the Kingdom of Poland, such as protection from discrimination and hate speech. And as I mentioned, Poland historically was a haven for Jews across Europe. And that was actually enshrined in law going back as early as 1264. Twelve Articles, considered to be the first record of human rights in Europe. The British Empire abolishes slavery in 1807 and the Slave Trade Act and then the Slave Slavery Abolition Act in 1833. If you're familiar with these.
Oh, yeah, yeah, baby.
International Red Cross is created in 1864. It lays the foundation for international humanitarian law and actually an organization that would try to do something about humanitarian crisis. Although obviously, especially Jews have a lot of complaints against the Red Cross in terms of their humanitarian effort, but certainly there were, there might even been, you know, going back to the Templars and earlier, the League of Nations, 1919, after World War I, the Treaties of Versailles, trying to get rid of, God forbid, some of the atrocities that happened in World War I with like gassing. In 1945, you have the Yalta Conference, which disbands the League of Nations in order to create the United Nations. And, you know, as we mentioned, they create the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, which relatively is yet to be implemented, even the, you know, the Universal Declaration of Human Rights is more theoretical or even utopian vision that even the best societies in the world today fail to live up to. You just read the Charter of the United Nations, "To achieve international cooperation in solving international problems of an economic, social, cultural, and humanitarian character and promoting and encouraging respect for human rights and for the fundamental freedoms for all without distinction as to race, sex, language, or religion." So this is in the 40s and we'll see that this basically gets enshrined into US law, British law, Canadian law, different laws all, all over the world. And most places are moving in the direction of putting this into law. And we'll go into how this gets enacted into the US. You see Articles One and Two are your foundation principles, dignity, liberty, equality, and brotherhood. Articles Three to 11 are rights to the individual, such as the right to life and the prohibition of slavery. Articles 12 to Seven are Articles twelve to seven are rights of the individual in civil and political society, eighteen to twenty-one spiritual public and political freedoms, such as freedom of religion and freedom of association. And twenty-two to twenty-seven, social, economic and cultural rights. And you know, there's a whole bunch of treaties. Here's a list of uh, you just tons of treaties that have been signed by most of the major nations of the world. Geneva Convention begins in eighteen sixty-four with what we'd mentioned earlier, but in nineteen forty-nine is uh, you know, the official uh, Geneva Convention. You know, it comprises four treaties and three additional protocols that establish the standards of international law for the humanitarian treatment of the victims of war. The Articles of the Fourth Geneva Convention in nineteen forty-nine extensively define the basic wartime rights of prisoners, civil and military, establish protections for the wounded and establish protections for the civilians in and around a war zone. Two protocols were adopted in seven nineteen seventy-seven that extended the terms of the nineteen forty-nine convention with additional protections. In two thousand and five, a third brief protocol was added, establishing an additional protective sign for medical services. Uh, nations who are part of these treaties must enact and enforce legalizing, penalizing any of these crimes are obligated to search for persons alleged to commit these crimes or order them to be committed and to bring them to trial. The principle of universal jurisdiction also applies to the enforcement of grave breaches when the UN Security Council asserts its authority and jurisdiction from the UN Charter to apply universal jurisdiction uh, via the International Criminal Court. So there's a summary of the first, second, third and fourth protocol. And uh, you know, so I got a lot more. I'm not sure if you have any comments on that. I'll try to check the chat. You still there, Claire? Claire? I'm not sure if I lost Claire. She's supposed to be, tells me she's here, but she doesn't have an avatar because she's from her phone. Um, I apologize to people who are watching. Thank God we got ten people in the chat right now. Appreciate everyone watching. I'm going to read through some of the chat. And Oliver, good to see you after a while. Hysteristy. You know, hope this is useful for you if Claire comes back on. Now I even add the link in the hangouts if people, uh, you want to come on and discuss this. This, this uh, stream was uh, you created through conversations I've been having with Claire and you were specifically related to what I said that, you know, white nationalism basically already lost. And so I wanted to demonstrate that legally, what's happening right now isn't uh, is the result of decades and decades of uh, legal decisions. And let me see if I get Claire. If she's, if she's talking, I'm not hearing it.
Um, I, I might be dosing off from time to time.
Okay. Oh, no, it's no, it's no problem. It's the, I don't mind just doing the, you know, the public education, public study sessions for my own. Okay. So if you're enjoying listening, I'll just keep on going. Or if you want to uh, add something now, you, you can and then. Okay. So I'm just going back to screen share. I got a lot of presentations, but it's, you know, my, my main goal here is just to kind of show the history of these laws and the the situation we're in right now. So let's look at the US uh, let's look at the civil rights movement in the US. I got a few slides on this. You know, civil rights refers to the rights of citizens to political and social freedoms and equality. Civil rights means that people have the right to be treated the same regardless of their race, gender or religion. These rights are law in the United States and many other nations. Civil rights are guaranteed by law to every US citizen now. It was not always this way and took many years to achieve. The Fourteenth Amendment guarantees all citizens with equal protection under law. Fifteen amendments said the right to vote shall not be denied on the basis of race. Um, you got Plessy Ferguson and Jim Crow. So even though the, you had the constitutional amendments, um, there are certain rulings that uh, Plessy versus Ferguson's allows separation on races. And then Jim Crow laws actually require people have separate uh, you know, so obviously in the US, you know, after slavery ended and you have reconstruction and generally you have the era of segregation and uh, you know, people, you know, some nice pictures of uh, people don't know much of this history. NAACP founded in nineteen oh nine with W E B Du Bois and you have some Jewish support. Thorold Marshall, who eventually ends up on the Supreme Court. Argues against school segregation. Your Brown versus Board of Education in nineteen fifty-four, which is starting to break away segregation. And you have broken apart. So it's really like a ten-year precursor of mega events starting in the fifties till you actually have the civil rights legislation in the sixties. So I mean, you think like in the current situation now where people are trying to change the system, that uh, it, it was a long fight. And you people have studied the, you know, the bus boycott going back to fifty-five. You arrests, people are beaten, people were killed. You Martin Luther King Junior. Sit-ins. March on Washington in nineteen sixty-three. Five hundred thousand African Americans marched on Washington in uh, nineteen sixty-three, under President Kennedy, who's starting to show signs for the civil rights legislation, which will be passed under Lyndon Johnson a few years later. You know, school integration is said nineteen fifty-four happens, although it takes a while, federal troops are required to enforce integration. People have probably seen these famous pictures. You know, Little Rock, Arkansas in nineteen fifty-seven where they've, the National Guard comes to forcibly allow blacks into the schools there. You have famous riots. This is common American history. I'm not sure anyone watched. I'll check the chat in a second to see if anyone has any comments on there, but you just give a little historical backdrop. So Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four, this is the main jux of what changed in America, whereas these legislations starting in the sixties banned segregation in public places such as restaurants and buses under Lyndon Johnson, who uh, passes this legislation that's in effect today. And has, you know, has actually been increased. You see the Civil Rights Act of sixty-four and sixty-eight, the Voting Rights Act of sixty-five, the Twenty-Fourth Amendment banning poll taxes. And you know, let alone all of the efforts that people did on the side, you know, the Freedom Riders who were, you're trying to take buses around and you know, God forbid, there were bombings and people were killed. This is well-known history in America. I'm not sure what type of people are watching this. So I don't see anything in the chat, so I'm just going to keep on keep on with uh, some of these slides I prepared. And we're going to get into equal employment in a lot of the more modern stuff that you see today that uh, is affecting. So let's do one more overview of civil rights. You obviously the Declaration of Independence, we're given the long history. We hold these troops to be self-evident that all men were created equal. You however, that wasn't applied to all people. That was largely uh, white European males, landowners of good standing that at that point um, did include Jews. You Abraham Lincoln's Emancipation Proclamation. Uh, Jim Crow eighteen eighty were codes which resulted in separate but equal treatment for blacks. Were in effect in parts of the United States, separate facilities for African Americans and white citizens, including schools were not considered unequal by the court segregation, separation on the basis of race. And this case was legal. NAACP. And we discussed Thorold Marshall, Brown versus Board of Education in nineteen fifty-four. Ruling that Supreme Court ruled that separate education facilities are unequal. You Rosa Parks again, who was actually from Detroit. And uh, I think her descendants actually supported President Trump that uh, there was some connection between Rosa Park and President Trump. But uh, so you have the Southern Christian Leadership Conference in January nineteen fifty-six, you know, the rise of Martin Luther King. Nineteen fifty-seven, Governor of Arkansas orders the National Guard to block nine black students from entering central high schools. So it was actually the opposite. The state tried to prevent the enforcement of federal law. And President Dwight Eisenhower sent federal troops to Arkansas to protect the students who became known as the Little Rock Nine. So I mean, what happened first, the federal government on the national level forces these laws upon all the states. And some of the states tried to block them and the federal government comes in to force these laws, you know, causing almost another civil war, God forbid, between the federal and state governments over civil rights and equality for blacks. You get the Greensboro led to big sit-ins in the sixties and you got to be, you see these pictures of uh, you hear you have whites that joined the blacks. You see originally it just blacks and you had the whites that start to join the blacks and uh, you creates the snowball effect would eventually lead to the civil rights. And I'm sure a lot of people have seen these pictures before, you know, they're pretty famous. You know, God forbid, uh, four girls were killed in a, in a bombing at a church in sixty-three. Um, this one involves a Jew, the murder of uh, people trying to, after, after, you know, July second nineteen sixty-five, President Lyndon Johnson signed the Civil Rights Act of sixty-four, which prohibits discrimination in public accommodations, employment in any programs, education or social based on race, color, religion or national origin. Yet violent acts continued and in August, three civil rights workers, uh, James Chaney, Andrew Goodman and Michael Schwerner, who were investigating the burning of a Mississippi, Mississippi church were killed by the Ku Klux Klan. I'm not sure if two of them were Jews or just one of them were Jews. But you know, these famous, you know, known and so you had people that were helping the, the blacks in civil rights and a lot of them Jews, well, they're not just Jews. And then obviously Malcolm X who uh, takes a more violent approach to and actually Muslim. Are you still there, Claire?
Yes, yes, I'm here.
Yeah, I'm so, you know, then you have the rise of Malcolm X and the um, the effect of Islam in uh, being a very good strategy for organizing and uh, forcing civil rights and actually, you know, they have the Black Panthers and the Judeo. So you, you have like Garvey, Garveyism, which is based on Hebraicism and thinking that the blacks from Africa were Israelites. And uh, and then you have the, you know, the Nation of Islam and Malcolm X, which both took more violent approach to the Christian approach. Sixty-seven Thorold Marshall becomes the first African-American Supreme Court Justice. Um, the Edward Brooke elected Senator of Massachusetts. You the assassination of Dr. King and then the rise of Jesse Jackson. Then eighteen nineteen eighty-six legislation signed by President Reagan establishes Martin Luther King's birthday as a national holiday. And uh, you know, so this is a nice overview. Hopefully most of you know this history. And uh, do you have any comment on Nation of Islam and Malcolm X as a effect in uh, civil rights here in America that took a more violent approach? Claire?
Uh, yes, sorry. What was the question?
Let me, you, I know you preach secular Quranism. I'm not sure where you'd put Malcolm X and the Nation of Islam in that because you that, I don't have too many slides. I don't even really have any slides except the ones that were included in that. But uh, Malcolm X and Nation of Islam and even the Judeo Garvey movements do play a big part. Black Panthers and uh,
But the, the separatist movement, so that they, they really just kind of wanted to be apart from white America while, while secular Quranism was, is really meant for for everyone in the nation.
I think that comes later. I mean, originally, I'm not sure if actually uh, you know, the Elijah Muhammad, what his views on separate separation, but uh, you're certainly in the push for civil rights when maybe they wanted separation all along, but the, but the willing, willingness to use violence. To, so you had Martin Luther King and the largely peaceful movements. And then you had a fraction that were willing to use more violence and, and that's actually associated with Islam.
Well, he distorted Islam, didn't he? Because he was saying he, he created a new store, a new narrative. Black people and Islam that, you know, wasn't mentioned at all in, in the Quran. He was just saying, like, he are special. And you know, there was just some special narrative just for black people. When in fact, um, the Quran was, was, you know, everybody be Muslim and no race will be considered better or worse than any other, except in, in good deeds.
You know, we talked about I mean, we, we talked about earlier, the different laws for different people. So when you have an Islamic nation where the Islam is the majority and uh, you're treating non-Islamic as a minority. And then you have a different system of Islamic jurisprudence where you have Islam as a minority in a majority nation of whatever sort, whether it's Christian or pagan or secular. And the Christian approach of Dr. King, which was more pacifist as opposed to uh, the more violent approach to protecting your civil rights that comes from Islam. And you see that today, you know, with terrorism in the West or you know, what's referred to as terrorism or all the violence, which to some extent is a protection of civil rights. If you look at jihad like that. And uh, you know, if you look Christian, okay, enough people will die as martyrs and God will protect us. So wherever the Christian theology versus the Islamic, and if you, you know, we talked about the seven noahid laws. If you looked at the Christian approach to that or the Islamic approach, certainly Islamic approach is probably more violent than the Christian approach.
Well, the Christian approach um, included the Crusades and the Inquisition. Um, and the, the, the Inquisition was conducted on, on people who had already converted to Christianity, but that didn't quite satisfy the um, Catholic Church. So they, they inquired as to whether they really believed in the Trinity and all that kind of thing. So um, I'm not really quite sure what that was about, but, but that is um, pretty totalitarian, isn't it? It's like, yeah, you forced us into converting to Christianity, but, but you're still checking up on us and, you know, making us eat pork and, you know, just to be sure. So that, that's, well, that's obviously oppressive. Well, Islam is sort of, it's like, yeah, we're gonna, you know, impose Sharia on you, but, but we're gonna treat Jews and Christians as kind of privileged people because they were, you know, senior to us in, in faith, because you know, they're you know, Judaism and Christianity came before Islam. Um, and obviously they disapprove of um, idolatry. Um, but, but I suppose the idea really is, is that um, um, you, it, it really depends on how it's interpreted, isn't it? Um, you know, for, for certain schools of Sharia, they, they will say that, yeah, although we're a Muslim country, we're only going to um, impose Sharia law on, on Muslims. So um, non-Muslims living in the country would not be subject to it at all. So they can gamble, they can drink, they can eat pork. Um, but, but you know, like in Saudi Arabia, you wouldn't be able to eat pork or, or drink or, or do any of those things.
Well, if you put it to the modern terms. Well, let's put it to the modern terms of what you precipitated this discussion, which was white nationalism. And if you looked uh, you know, obviously there's not that many Muslim whites. Uh, but you have the Christian approach and you have a pagan approach, atheistic, a secular approach. People have a more violent approach. Uh, but what would it be if there was, you know, mass conversion of whites to Islam? And if, if you actually accept that the law these days disfavors whites in the West, if that's currently the state of the law, even though there might be historical wealth and you benefit and privilege to whites, but the current state of the law might uh, discriminate against whites, what would be? What would be if there was a mass movement of white conversion to Islam? And how would they be dealing with the situation if they were Muslim?
Well, I, I mean, what seems obvious to me is that the problem in the West is the matriarchy. It is that the fact that men have no rights, you know, all the minorities have rights against them. You can't say mean things about non-whites. You can't say many things about women, or gay people, transgender people. Well, you can say, you know, all sorts of mean things about white heterosexual men. So they're the ones who don't have the protection of all these race laws. So I guess they would be wanting to repeal all of these laws. That's how I'd look at it, if I were white, and male, and heterosexual, and saying, no, we're the people who do the work, and have the children, and bring them up. So you give us our rights and stop discriminating against us and not giving us any protection. So that would be, you know, the first thing to do. And of course, Islam has, well, the Quran has a verse, which is, I think it's two, chapter two, verse two hundred and fifty-six, which is to say that there should be no compulsion in belief, because truth stands clear from error, which I interpreted to mean you're, there should be no thought crime laws. So you can discriminate against people on, you know, whatever grounds you wish, on, because of the principle of freedom of contract. So if you don't want to hire anyone for any reason whatsoever, because she's female, because she's pregnant, because, you know, you don't like the color of their eyes, or whatever, you have an absolute right to do that. And I mean, that was how it was, really, you know, when, when the West was properly liberal, you had this thing called freedom of contract. So you had the right to organize yourselves, you had the right to form a club, so that you could exclude whoever you didn't want to join your club, and kick out whoever who, you know, broke your rules. Or, so, there will be more freedom of
Your robot, your voice is fading out.
Oh, okay, I'm, I'm I forgot what I was gonna say now. You can take over.
Okay, now I want to hear your opinion about, say, something was happening to your voice, and it's called roboting or whatever, if you were holding your phone in a weird way or something. I mean, Elijah Muhammad says that Islam is the only religion that addresses the plight of the black man in America, and, which might be true, and largely from a racial
Or can you remember what he said was the reason for him saying that?
Well, I think in terms of method, the method to achieve civil rights and the disenfranchisement and the structural racism and all the stuff that Islam was the only religion that would be capable of liberating the black man in America. And, you know, to some extent, today, that's basically been enshrined, where it's kind of assumed that Islam is a religion for dark-skinned people, that Islam is just inherent of a larger racial war, where Islam is a force of the dark-skinned people, and Christianity is a force of the lighter-skinned people, which isn't necessarily correct, but there's certain, you know, demographic truths, and I don't, you know, prepare maps or something, but you could look at demographic maps, or racial distributions of religions. You know, that's why I was comparing, what would it be if, you know, whites thought they were disenfranchised, if that's legitimately true, that if it would be a situation where Islam would be the best vehicle for the liberation of white people? I don't know if that's part of your theory of secular Koranism, and certainly in the West, Islam has been a very powerful vehicle in the creation of rights for darker-skinned people.
Well, as far as I can tell, the rules in the Bible and the Quran are basically the same. They promote the same, you know, patriarchal values, it's marriage and family values. And all, you know, all the five world religions promote this, and this is the way that men can retain control over feminists, because if they make sure that, if society is arranged in such a way that most women and men are married, then its members will behave in a certain way. So what we have now in the West is a lot of single women who want to, want the state to give them lots of free stuff, and that's why they vote left. And so
But you have provisions, just like Islam, like the white nationalists would, or alt-right would say, okay, like, you know, let's say we're basically on board with civil rights and multiculturalism, like, all we want to be able to do is preserve our lineage, marry each other, and maybe have like Bosnia, certain regions where you have European Muslims. In Islamic nation, does, you know, does a blue-eyed man have the right to preserve his blue eyes and marry a fellow blue-eyed person in order to preserve their light features? Or would Islam say, no, you should race mix?
Well, Islam only cares that you marry another Muslim. I think that the sort of different rules with men or women, it's like, if a woman, if a Muslim woman marries a Christian man, he has to convert, because the perception is that he would do stuff that will make it difficult for her to worship, so he has to convert to Islam. But if it's the other way around, if it's a Christian woman and a Muslim man, then she doesn't have to convert.
There'll be the divergence between the Nation of Islam that tried to have segregation among blacks, although they converted to Islam, that they intermarried with each other, to the blacks that became largely Muslim and intermarried with Arabs and other Islamic people. And, you know, if you look at places in Russia, or ethnically, if you ask your local Imam, would he say, preferably you should marry a fellow Chinese Muslim, you know, the, okay, you could marry a white Muslim, or an Arab Muslim, or a black Muslim, but preferably you should marry within your race, and that would be a fellow Chinese Muslim, or you're saying there's no weight, there's no weight bear to that.
No doubt, I mean, there is no rule for that, but of course, there'll be unspoken pressures in that, you know, your parents might prefer you to marry someone of your own race. But the Jews have the same thing, too. I mean, I know you come in four colors, so you might not, you know, an Ashkenazi might not want to marry a Sephardic, and so on and so forth, but actually, technically, you're supposed to be the same.
What's enshrined in halacha, so to say, the Jewish law, the expression and the terms that Jewish law uses in Hebrew is min ha'keh halacha, that a custom is like a law, so that the preference for marrying within your own is to preserve your customs, and that you should keep the customs of your parents. So if you're Ashkenazi, versus Spardi, or Mizrahi, or any part of the world, you have specific customs related to the nation where you've came from. And if you marry with a separate part of within Judaism, it'll cause problems with the maintaining of those customs. So there might be a preference to intermarrying within the specific tribe. And certainly here in America, probably London, you know, Jews segregate largely by internal race, you know, saying, German, Polish, Spardi, all have different synagogues, you know, like, most synagogues are racially divided among Jews, and most mosques are like that also. And I study the history, like Detroit has one of the biggest Muslim communities in the US. And when, at University of Michigan, for example, where there's really, you're just the Muslim Student Association, basically all forms of Muslims, from, you know, Malaysia, Arab, black, white, pray together, because there's only one organization. But in Detroit, where there's fifty different mosques, the mosques are largely divided by race, where the Yemenites, and the Syrians, and the Iraqi, and Iranian, and Malaysian, and so on and so on, basically have their own mosque and self-segregate. I assume in London, it's largely the same. You might have a few cultural institutes that bring together Muslims from across the spectrum, but people largely self-segregate within Islam to pray with their own internal racial difference.
Well, yeah, and even when they don't want to, they might feel obliged to, because, you know, if you and I were supposed to be, okay, together on a desert island, and it's like, you know, there is no other people for us to mix with, so we have to, you know, interact socially with each other. But if suddenly, you know, a whole bunch of Jews arrived on a desert island, then you kind of feel obliged to be with them, and, you know, and then
Well, I'm already untouchable, so to say. I'm already a product of race mixing, you know, to that extent. And even there's laws within Jewish law about half-Jews, so to say, in the marriage, you know, sort of half-Jew marry another half-Jew, and that's actually even discussed all the way back in the Talmud, the marriage laws of half-Jews.
But these rules are sometimes very strictly adhered to, and sometimes completely ignored, you know, almost depending on the mood of the people who are dealing with you. So for myself, I mean, I'm sometimes regarded as a foreigner by other Chinese people, and then, you know, when they're slightly better mood, they'll say, I'm Chinese. I mean, you know, we really, we really never know with people. And it's a kind of, you know, mood and subjective feeling, and how they're feeling that day about how they're gonna treat you. So
And there's civil rights, where saying, you're a Muslim, you're entitled to all the rights and privileges of an Islamic country or state as a Muslim, but they also might have racial. So I mean, we discussed this before, I think, our first talk, you said, what was your status in Malaysia? Did you have the same passport as someone that was ethnically Malaysian, even though you're Chinese? Or was it just, you know, you were classified as a Muslim, and there's no distinction that you actually had Chinese ethnicity, and you had complete equality with Malaysians, or was it separated?
Well, no, the Malays have racial privileges, which are not open to, you know, other non-Malays.
Even though you're Muslim.
The passports are the same.
But even if you're, even as a Chinese Muslim in Malaysia, you were not granted all the rights and privileges of an ethnic Malay.
Chinese Muslim. I think how it works is that you can be an Indian, and you convert to Islam, but all the privileges do not kick in while in, for you, but it can be passed on to your children. So all the racial privileges of Malay that you as a convert hope to enjoy, you won't enjoy until the next generation. That, I believe, is the case, but I'm, you know, not absolutely sure. Because, you know, there are people who convert in the hope of gaining privileges, and I think some are open and some are not open to them.
Yeah, maybe we could do a different stream on straight theology, and look at the Islamic Judeo, and maybe Christian approaches to civil rights, human rights, ethnic differences, structuring of societies, and there might be your open debate within it, you know, because obviously, in Israel, I think about thirty percent of Ashkenazi and Spardi intermarry, but at the same time, you have large communities that have never intermarried, you know, most Ashkenazi and different Spardi Eastern Jewish cultures, although a decent proportion of them intermarry, and might move into Tel Aviv, and the larger Israeli society that most, majority actually have been intermarrying within their own race, like, you know, like Russian Jews, even if they've been in Israel for three or four generations, are still likely to marry a fellow Russian, just like Moroccan, or Tunisian, or even Polish versus Polish versus German, or Spanish, or English, or French, that, you know, so you have a sizable amount, like maybe thirty percent of Jews that are race mixing within their fellow Jews, but the vast majority still choose to be secluded, living separately and breeding separately.
Yeah.
And I guess, I think Islamic society is similar.
Yes, because they also, you know, come from different nations, and they, you know, have different shades of skin, and their family will have, you know, certain ideas about whom they should marry. And of course, the pull of, you know, the similar is pretty irresistible for most people. You know, really, they would, you know, marry whoever their families feel they should meet, should marry, and obviously, they can only marry people whom they do meet socially. And that would mean going to the same synagogue, or mosque, or whatever, you know.
You know, it goes back to the Bible with the twelve tribes of Israel, and even it's mentioned to Moses, and, you know, inheritance going through the male, and intermarriage between tribes, that the tribal land goes through the male and different things. I mean, that has even, you know, biblical precedence till today.
Yeah, so it's all about the rules. Therefore, it's all about, you know, the laws of inheritance, and laws of marriage, and, you know, law property, and that kind of thing. And it really, you know, depends on what the individual laws are, and, you know, how it's applied, because, you know, obviously, different groups interpret the same laws differently. And, you know, there's certainly, you know, more than one school of Sharia, and they don't all agree with each other on certain things. So, yeah, it's all a matter of interpretation. And what we're talking about really is sort of like, you know, when we talk about human rights, there is an unspoken assumption that, you know, we all have the right to, for example, not be murdered. We all have the right not to have things stolen from us. You know, that's sort of, you know, so basic, that, you know, we all get it.
Israel is one of the larger violators, according to the UN, of human rights law, that you will look in, and can you set up an ethno-state? According to most international law, you can't, you know, because that goes against this Universal Declaration of Human Rights that requires equality in, you know, misogyny laws. And I will go shortly back into some more of these laws, you know, where the US actually had misogyny laws for the majority of its history. And I assume England, I don't know, I didn't, you know, put that in the history of misogyny laws in the UK or its history, and you're saying Islam never had misogyny laws, and even Islam may have allowed marriage between Muslims and non-Muslims, you know, let alone different races.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, all these different communities would just have rules about, well, you can't marry anybody who's not, who's a non-Jew, if you're a Jew, and, you know, Muslims, Catholics, whatever. So that was how it worked, but, you know, if, but then, you know, you think of South Africa and apartheid. So basically, these people didn't have any particular religion, and they wanted the government to separate them into their different groups, and preserve their racial integrity, and make it against the law for, you know, a Japanese person to marry an Indian person. But, you know, when you think about how certain religions do it, you know, it's like, you know, Jews have had no problem keeping their integrity, their racial integrity, without anybody saying, oh, Jews, you've only got to marry Jews, because you're, you know, you guys are still around. South Asians also have that. I mean, I think what they do is that they would have honor killing. So if you want to marry someone mom and dad don't quite approve of, you might well be murdered by members of a family, for, you know, disgracing them for your reproductive choices. So, you know, those were their ways of making sure that the group retained its integrity.
It's interesting, because Islam probably theoretically would have the easiest time corresponding with current international human law. Like, in practice, probably not, because most Islamic nations are considered to be big violators of human rights law. But in theory, that Islamic Sharia law is actually the closest to the modern definition. And you have to look in the Christian law, which may have originally been closer to Sharia law, but with the creation of the Monarch Holy Roman Empire, where you had different nationalities and Christian nations under a crown that was all sanctioned by the Pope in Rome, that led to a racial division within Christianity. And I don't know, possibly Islam, with the creation of monarchies within Islam today, in, you know, like the Wahhabi and Jordanians, and really, the Saudi Arabia is probably the only major monarchical power, I guess, maybe Kuwait and Qatar, and the UAE also have relatively powerful monarchies. I don't know if they intermarry, if that's common, that, that, you know, they're falling into the previous Catholic system of separating Christian nations by race.
Hmm, perhaps, perhaps. I mean, but I suppose inevitably, there's going to be some sort of race mixing, and, you know, disapproved of, you know, spousal choices. But on the whole, people manage to, you know, Um, but but on the whole, people manage to, you know, it's it's the religion that that keeps the people, you know, distinct as a group. So if you if you can marry just anybody, then obviously you as a group will will just disappear.
Yeah, I remember Chad is mentioning slavery, you know, relative, you know, human rights obviously has completely rejected the use of slavery or forced labor. And although Islam has a lot of laws of taking care of the poor, historically Islam has favored slavery, just as Judaism historically has favored slavery.
No, it's impossible to forbid these institutions. Um, some people do say, well, I mean, that slavery is an institution. It is an institution in the sense that it's a naturally recurring, occurring practice um, that that just pops up in in any, um, you know, human society, because it just seems a kind of obvious bargain to make. Um, you know, about using slave labor or selling oneself into slavery when one can't, you know, pay one's debts or or just can't afford to live. So, um, so so that that's how they do it. And I suppose maybe there's these institutions should not be criminalized, but rather regulated. Because as recently as two thousand and five, I think, um, that the British Parliament passed an act called the Slave, the Modern Slavery Act, two thousand and five. And and you think, oh, but it's abolished. But but, you know, he is, he is an act of parliament actually acknowledging its existence. It's almost like saying, you know, here now we have modern slavery and this is what we can do and, you know, how much you can buy and sell them for. I mean, obviously not, because of the same, you know, you're not supposed to do it at all. But this still happens with London's homeless. Because obviously, there there are people going around to the London homeless saying, well, winter's coming on, you don't seem to have a place to live. How about you come with me and you, you know, you'll be given work and you won't have to sleep rough. And and, you know, we might give you something, some money every now and then. Um, if if you do good work. And then there are people who accept this bargain.
Well, it's interesting. I mean, I'm not sure if it's on Facebook. My mother's just retired, but she was a very prominent bankruptcy attorney. And uh, most of the rabbis opposed the concept of bankruptcy. And historically, the Bible lays out slavery, you know, as the solution to debt and poverty, that people who are just poor and can't seem to succeed would sell themselves into slavery, or God forbid, if they got into debt and couldn't repay their debt, that they would be forced into slavery in order to repay their debt. So I mean, that's when bankruptcy first came out in the America, uh, when we got rid of debtors prisons, the rabbis actually opposed it as being against God's law, because God, um, according to the Mosaic Law, there is no provision for cancellation of debt. Um, besides for the, you know, the seventh year of the Shmita and that slave, you know, the Jewish law didn't favor debtors prison, but it favored the concept of slavery and and slavery was supposed to be the system that was supposed to help people re-enter into society. If they were failed people of society, couldn't make it, that they would sell themselves as a slave to a prominent family. The prominent family would train them to be a productive member of society. They would be able to pay off their debt. And then after the training from being a slave, would be able to re-enter society as a productive member. That was at least in theory, the righteous attempt of biblical slavery and probably Sharia Islamic slavery at least had, in theory, this righteous attempt of rehabilitating people and solving poverty.
Yeah, yeah. And also, it's it's an alternative form of welfare or workfare even. Because these people would be, um, you know, obviously, the the owner of the slave would have to feed and house.
You're roboting, even if you're.
And 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 extremen. Okay, um, wh- what I'm saying is is that, um, it it it's an alternative form of welfare. You know, just because you would get yourself fed and and housed if if you became a slave. And and obviously, you'd you'd get some training for for whatever it is your 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 work you're suitable for. And and so, you know, instead of the welfare state and workfare, you 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 have this, well, simpler system perhaps.
Yeah, we discussed this regarding the last Ask the Rabbi and the Noah Hyde laws. That my understanding is that you you could have different systems of justice that look and appear completely different. And in theory, at least historically, that included slavery, where you could have righteous societies that had slaves. According to Sharia or or Jewish law, you know, it was the modern times of Declaration of Human Rights. Uh, but even, you know, not putting in the historical slavery question, that uh it could take different forms in different societies. So you have your certain amount of universal human rights of the seven, you know, Noah Hyde laws, just like, don't steal, don't kill, don't commit adultery, you know, don't eat raw animals and the basic stuff that everyone has to abide to. And then there has to be a system of justice that is fairly administered, where people know what the laws are and the law is fairly administered. But those laws could be completely different from one society to the next, where one could be very free and open and one could be very strict and closed. Uh, but as long as it's clearly delineated what the law is. And conceivably, that could even be your racial. You could have ethno-states that are just according to the seven Noah Hyde laws and you get multicultural societies. Although, you know, we'll get into the, you know, the rights of refugees and the rights of minorities and uh which uh you're certainly Judaism Sharia law definitely deals with those topics, you know, going back to the scripture about the rights of refugees and the rights of minorities within society, although you could have different Sharia compliant countries that take completely different approaches to it.
Hmm.
And then, you know, the irony that, according to the UN, Israel is one of the largest offenders of human rights till today.
Well, but because they don't want an ethno-state, but but then, you know, again, it it strikes me as a kind of freedom of association thing. But like, you know, well, well, if you can get an ethno-state and people, they're already, you know, the majority race, um, you know, why can't you just keep it going? Because, you know, that seems to be the ideal, really. I mean, everybody aspires to it, like, oh, we just want everybody to to look like us and be like us. And then we'll be, you know, more more socially cohesive than than the people who, you know, come in all colors and have all different religions and can never agree and are always fighting. But then, you know, you you get civil wars within, you know, nations of the same race and and color. I mean, you know, the the Anglo-Saxon Protestant is infamous for for his wars against, you know, other Anglo-Saxon Protestants. They they did have two world wars after all. They started the two world wars, you know, the the white and Christian.
We discussed this. I like the vision, kind of like New York or or London, where you have your parts of the area that are race mixed and intermarriage between a bunch of different people. And you could even have like a gay area, but you also have ethnically homogeneous areas where you could have like, you know, little Pakistan and uh you know, Muslim mayor, and you could go to certain parts of the town and you could think you're in a foreign nation. And to me, that's that's an ideal vision of multiculturalism, where you have the same time preservation of culture, the right of people to keep their culture in larger society and self-segregate. But also the rights of people to do as they see fit and intermarry and try to create themselves. And that's, you know, zoning and urban planning as seen in cities like London and New York.
Yeah, you you make it sound like Disneyland. I mean, I have no objection to that. I mean, it would just make, you know, the city more interesting. Um, but but I mean, this is sort of different from from, you know, people, you know, having a problem with uncontrolled immigration. I I think, you know, what you've just described, the kind of Disneyland of of culture in the city is um, well, I mean, it sounds quite appealing to me, really. Um, just just because I'm a culture vulture and and um um, London is in many respects like that. If you, you know, drive from one end of London to another, you can, you know, see how it changes in in so many ways.
You mentioned, you mentioned culture vulture. I think the crows actually. Do you have, did you have Zoroastrians in Malaysia? I know even in India, India has a lot of protection for multiculturalism and the you know, the Zoroastrians uh have the custom of having their the dead eaten by crows and hanging them on top of their like minarets or whatever. And even in India, like, so some places, they'll have major city places where they have the um, Zoroastrian temples and you'll see the bodies hanging over the top of their, they're not called minarets, but whatever they call them, being eaten by crows. That's that part of their tradition. I'm not sure if you're familiar with that.
Well, I, that that's all news to me. I don't think I've ever met a Zoroastrian.
Freddie Mercury from, even on my YouTube page, we have Zoroastrians here in Detroit that I've interfaced in, you know, they've even been to the synagogue. And uh yeah, I mean, Freddie Mercury from Queens, probably the most famous uh in contemporary society, the singer or the the Tata famous Tata company like Tata Steel, you know, one of the biggest international companies there, Zoroastrian. And, you know, so, but it's just a question of multiculturalism. Where are you going to allow the people to have their death ritual? And so, okay, we respect religion, we respect your ritual. And according to your understanding, the best way to make it into the afterlife is to have your body eaten by birds. And, you know, then to say, we're going to allow your section in London to build your temple and uh you have dead bodies being eaten by birds in public, like, you know, they have in some places in India.
Yeah, or Tibet. I I think what they do is they break up the bodies and then give it to the vultures and they call it a sky burial, because obviously the vultures, you know, fly up to the sky. Um.
I would probably allow, I mean, for me, I would probably allow that. I mean, within certain, I mean, if, you know, because obviously they're dead bodies. And if they were, the religion was having that done to live bodies.
Public health issues, I suppose. But but, you know, I I guess, um, I'd be inclined to allow it, but I know that that there was some some Hindu people saying, well, we want to have, um, um, our Hindu funeral pyres, which is a lot of burning and um, and and they were refused permission because of obviously of the air pollution. Um, and and I guess it was too outlandish for 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 English people to put up with. I mean, it was just, you know, yet another straw that that could be about to break the camel's back. But but they were applying for that, but they didn't get it.
Okay, so let's do a few more slides and get some more information history. Let me finish up these backdrops to uh the history of civil rights up to the sixties. And then I got more on the current state of the law with all the equal employment and the stuff that's happened uh you're recent recently. So you know, the the historical backdrop of up to the sixty-five Civil 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 Rights Act in America in the UN, Creation of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights. And then, you know, we'll talk about all the equal employment law that has even led to uh the law possibly disfavoring whites in the West. So let's do one more on this one includes women and homosexuals, civil rights timeline and cases. You know, the the famous Dred Scott case, eighteen fifty-seven, where the court ruled that the I'm sorry, did you say something?
I'll be back in in just one minute. So so you carry on.
Yeah, okay. You know, so the your Dred Scott, the Supreme Court rules that no person of African-American descent could be a citizen of the US and the Missouri Compromise was unconstitutional. And freed blacks all over the country lost citizenship and right to vote. And people, you know, blacks that had escaped slavery into the North were by law forced back into slavery. So I'm just, you go over a little bit more of this history. Um, black codes in southern states. Civil Rights Act of eighteen sixty-six and eighteen seventy-five, designed by national government to overturn black codes and grant equal access to voting, juries, public accommodations, and theaters, restaurants, and transportations. And it was actually vetoed by the president and got an override. Um, then eighteen seventy-seven, you start to see the weakening power of the federal government. So the federal government is pushing um, greater rights for blacks, um, but the strengthening of the rights of the states in the South to not obey the federal government. And you actually have, you know, occupation where the federal government comes in, like we saw in the sixties, forcing integration. Um, that that's happened many times, you know, that up to Jim Crow. Let's look at some civil rights cases. Eighteen eighty-three, five cases involving violations of Civil Rights Act of eighteen seventy-five and public accommodation. US Supreme Court, US Congress could only prohibit local and state governments from discrimination on privately held companies, including theaters. Severely limited the influence of the First Civil Rights Act of eighteen sixty-six, as well as the intent of the thirteenth to fifteenth amendment. And here we're talking about misogination laws banning interracial marriages um, that start to appear in the late eighteen hundreds. Um, Loving versus Virginia is nineteen sixty-seven overturned this type of statute law regarding marriage. I mean, there's even some misogination laws still in the book in state and local governments till today, but the, it wasn't till nineteen sixty-seven that misogination laws were officially forbidden in the in the US. Talking about fifteenth amendment. States using different methods to try to fight the federal laws, poll taxes, uh requirements for property ownership, literacy tests, grandfather clauses. They say that these pushed back by the southern states limited black voting by over sixty percent from originally after the Civil War. You know, as we talked about Plessy versus Ferguson. Um, so is Louisiana's law mandating racial segregation on its trains unconstitutional infringement on both the privileges and immunities of the equal protection clause of the Fourteenth Amendment? And the rule segregation is legal as long as it is equal. I don't have to repeat too much of this that we talked about before. School segregation, nineteen thirty-five. Um, almost all southern states and northern states had segregated schools. College and university were also segregated, and you had the black, uh, black historical universities. And uh, you know, so that we'll start having the cases of school desegregation largely led by the NAACP, possibly with some Jewish help. The Hedgepath Williams case, nineteen forty-four, desegregated public schools in New Jersey, which is the predecessor to the Brown versus Board of Education's more famous. Which is in the fifties, we talked about, you know, nineteen fifty-four. Is segregation legal under equal protection clause of the Fourteenth Amendment? And Brown one ruled, no, it's inherently unequal and therefore unconstitutional. In nineteen fifty-five, the case comes back to the court. What means should be used to implement the principles announced in Brown one? And ruled varying solutions developed by local school districts and governments plan should be implemented with all deliberate speed. But they allowed the separate districts to solve the problem on their own. And then we talked about the nonviolent tactics used for civil rights. So the difference between what's happening in the South and the North. Um, you have housing laws in the North, you know, you're redlining the busing. Talked about a lot of the stuff in other other slides. You know, the mass protests and you can see videos of this stuff. Most of these are famous pictures. Okay, so let's look at the Civil Rights Act nineteen sixty-four. Um, protection, voting, public places, education, the Voting Rights Act in nineteen sixty-five. More poll workers to monitor elections in the South, enforce voting laws in the South, and increase voting drives in the South, targeting blacks and, you know, elections, that's constantly an issue. You see the Democrats saying that uh people aren't being able to vote. And the Republicans are saying that there's, you know, double voting and dead people voting. So till today, there's some fight, but this was enshrined in law in the nineteen sixty-five Americans with Disabilities Act, nineteen ninety. You see the increase of civil rights, not just black and white, but you will see that that can come to gays and disabilities and so on and so on. So Title Nine of the Education Amendments in nineteen seventy-two. No person in the United States shall on the basis of gender be excluded from participation. Um, use the increase of gender equality together with civil rights. So here we got Schwan versus Charlotte Meckelberg, where the court's asking uh whether authorized oversee and produce remedies for state imposed segregation. whether offrise to oversee and produce remedies for state imposed segregation. And the court rules nine zero, federal government can't order districts to use quotas and force busing for racial proportion if the segregation was originally state imposed instead of segregation by choice. Affirmative action. So affirmative action actually also goes back to President Kennedy in the sixties. Here's President Johnson, um, speaking to Howard University. You do not hope to wipe away the scars of centuries by saying now you are free to go where you want, do as you desire and choose the leaders you please. You not take the man who for years has been hobbled by chains, liberate him, bring him to the starting line of race, saying you are free to compete with all the others. And still justly believe you have been completely fair. This is the next and more profound stage of the battle for civil rights. We seek not justice, just freedom, but opportunity, not just legal equality, but human ability, not just equality as a right and a theory, but equality is a fact and a result. So Johnson's executive order one one two four six enforces affirmative action for the first time. The executive order requires government contractors to take affirmative action towards prospective minority employees. And also aspects of hiring and employment contractors must take specific measures to ensure quality in hiring and must document these efforts. October thirteenth nineteen sixty seven, the order was amended to cover discrimination on the basis of gender. So regions of the University of California versus Baca nineteen seventy eight. This might already be an anti-affirmative action case. And the ruling five four, the use of specific quotas is illegal. Race can still be used as a permissible admission criteria to create a diverse learning environment, but specific quotas can't um, be used. We'll see that, you know, with the Asians till today, that this is still a very disputed issue, but already back in seventy eight, you said the use of quotas for affirmative action wasn't here two thousand and three. Gras versus Bollinger, two separate affirmative action cases involved in the University of Michigan, my alma mater. You know, does the University of Michigan's use of racial preference in undergraduate law, school admissions violate the equal protection clause of the fourteenth amendment? Or Title Six of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty four? And the ruling six three, if racial minorities get too large a percent of points towards admission, in this case twenty percent, then it would violate the fourteenth amendment equal protection clause because non-minorities are treated unequally. In the Grutter case, five four, race can be used as a compelling factor for admission by the state to create a diverse educational environment. But no specific points were awarded to make minority applicants superior to non-minorities. It's likely this is going to be brought before the new Supreme Court with the case against Harvard. Here we got two thousand and six, Supreme Court rules against considering race to integrate schools. Parents versus Seattle. Um, affirmative action suffers a setback bitterly divided court five four. Their programs in Seattle and Louisville, Kentucky, which tried to maintain diversity in schools by considering race when assigning students to magnet schools are unconstitutional. November two thousand and eight. Present ballot measure to ban affirmative action, government, education, and other institutions, states and cities are individually banning the use of affirmative action policies. Two thousand and nine, Ricky versus DeStefano. Cause case about promotion of firefighters based on test, ruling was unclear. You have women's rights cases, overview of women's rights in the twentieth century. Um, and a lot of these come together, you know, civil rights and human rights, you know, once you're granting human rights, eventually it's going to come to all cases. Talked about access to voting with the nineteenth amendment, uh, juries with the women. So you have the nineteenth amendment, states can't deny women the right to vote nineteen sixties, a new focus on the status of women in the US from several high profile publications. Nineteen sixty three, reported American woman documented pervasive discrimination against women in all walks of life. So Title Seven of the nineteen sixty four Civil Rights Act covered discrimination based on gender. When Equal Employment Opportunity Commission failed to enforce the law, the feminist interest group now was formed. Now fashioned itself as the NAACP with the goals of equal rights amendments, judicial decisions that created equality. Reed versus Reed nineteen seventy one, Idaho law, states males are preferable to females in settling estates of deceased children. So the court ruled unanimous, first time gender was applied to equal protection clause of fourteenth amendment. So the Equal Rights Amendment passes Congress in nineteen seventy two. States had ten years to ratify it. Within a year, twenty two votes voted in favor of it. Roe versus Wade nineteen seventy three, big issue till today, thirty five states ended up ratifying it. A Rosker case nineteen eighty one further stalls it. So Roe versus Wade nineteen seventy three. Standard review under the equal protection clause of the fourteenth amendment. To the lowest level, minimum rational standard, age, wealth, mental retardation, sexual orientation. The intermediate standard, does classification serve an important government objective? And is it substantially related to those ends? Strict scrutiny, is the classification necessary to accomplish a permissible state goal? Is it the least restrictive way to reach that goal? Race, alienage, and national origin. Fundamental freedoms such as speech, religion, assembly, and press. So Craig versus Borden nineteen seventy six. Oklahoma passes a law that allowed a low alcohol beer could be sold to eighteen year old woman, but men had to be twenty one. The court ruled selling this beer to men and women at two different ages was unconstitutional. Creating a new standard. Rosker versus Goldberg nineteen eighty one. Um, Carter nineteen eighty reactivated the registration of draft among women included. Congress went against his wishes regarding women. Men challenged the decision of Congress to not include women. So the ruling six three, the court found that men and women, because of combat restrictions on women, were not similarly situated for the purpose of draft registration. The court also upheld Congress's judgment that the administration of military problems that would be created by drafting women for non-combat roles were sufficient to justify the Military Selective Secret Service Act. The Equal Pay Act of nineteen sixty three, we'll talk about that more. Title Nine bars educational institutions who receive federal funds but are discriminating based on gender. Uh, Civil Rights Act nineteen sixty four also includes sexual harassment of prohibitions. And then we talk about gay rights. Um, Boy Scouts of America versus Dale in two thousand. Um, Dale's Eagle Scout, also gay activist. Scouts took away his uh Eagle Scout status and he sued. The ruling five four, the court says yes inside of the Boy Scouts, saying that private organizations have the right to determine who is in their groups. They have the right to expressive association. That's in two thousand, I think this gets turned over. So Lawrence versus Texas two thousand and three, police respond to neighbors reports of gunshots at the home of two men. Um, police forced their way into the home and found them to be getting busy. They were arrested under Texas sodomy laws. And they sued Texas under protection of the fourteenth amendment. The ruling six three, yes, there's no legitimate state interest that is justified by the law which invades the privacy of adults in their own home. It denies adults their due process, overturned a related ruling from nineteen eighties on the same subject. Um, forcing fourteen states to get rid of sodomy laws still in the books and disabilities. So Tennessee versus Lane two thousand and three, Lane disabled person who has a wheelchair unable to access the courtroom in the state courthouse in Tennessee, sued Tennessee for not being compliant under the eleventh amendment. Ruling five four, individuals with disabilities can sue the states for equal access to fundamental rights such as access to courtrooms, especially if the accommodation can be reasonably done. Okay, so more background. Check the chat. King Kafnis, good to see you. You hope so? Okay, so I'll do two more and then we'll see if uh so one more on civil rights. Just to get this timeline down and what led to, uh, you know, the Civil Rights Act in the sixties, you know, historically what had been to, what is now. There are two types of segregation. You had de-jury segregation, which was legally enforced segregation commonly in the South, and you had de facto segregation that was common in the North that didn't have laws. So in the South, you had laws prohibiting African-Americans from attending the same church, using the same swimming pool, eating in restaurants, or marrying white people. In the North, you had housing discrimination made segregation. White community groups did not allow non-whites to live in white neighborhoods. Every ethnic group had its own part of town. We discussed as many times, Plessy versus Ferguson, Brown versus Board of Education. So what caused things to change? World War Two, Korean War during World War Two and the Korean War, racial minorities such as African-Americans, Hispanics, Native Americans had made many gains. The US military had needed their help and it allowed them to fight. Many came home heroes and earned respect. Uh, most people believed America had fought for these wars for democracy and freedom. Racial segregation started to seem un-American to many. People remembered that Hitler and the other bad guys had been racists. Common narrative, uh, number two, the Cold War. During the Cold War, America was trying to convince the world that it was better than the Soviet Union. Racism made America look bad to the rest of the world. Communists could use America's racism as an example, showing that the US was evil. And actually you find a lot of cases of communists were very active in civil rights in the South and a lot of those communists were Jews. You know, which would be a separate discussion. I don't have that prepared for today. Television. The arrival of television, Americans could watch the news every day. Nonviolent civil disobedience used by King made the civil rights protesters look like good people. It made their opponents look hateful, violent, and ugly. People could also hear Dr. King's inspiring speeches. And, you know, big leaders, Marshall, Parks, King. See boycotts, hunger strikes, petitions, marches, and demonstrations, strikes. Civil disobedience, breaking the law, causing disturbance in order to get attention for your cause. Sit-ins, used today, protesters come into a place, sit down and refuse to move. You've been used for immigration, Congress, hundreds of people getting arrested over these issues. Court cases, legal actions, you know, Linda Brown sued the Board of Education to try to force them to allow Linda to attend the white school, which led to Brown versus Board of Education. Greensboro. Little Rock, you know, we've seen, seen this before, but it's pretty important in American history if people haven't learned it. I've, I've seen almost all this stuff before, but you know, I thought it was important that I do a public study session. Southern Manifesto was signed by all but three southern leaders. Al Gore, Lyndon Johnson, and Estes Kefaufer called for resistance, appealed to a motion of prejudice and paranoia, the united support of peaceful compliance might have diluted the South. So here's a timeline, kind of like a momentum building up, Freedom Riders. Um, integration at universities, the marches in Birmingham, sit-ins uh, to the march in Washington, to the Freedom Summer sixty four, leading to the Civil Rights Act. Selma campaign. Went all over Alabama, you know, common American history of people haven't, I live in Detroit, so I know a lot about African-American, American history. Okay, let's do one more here. Quick one. So, what are human rights, fundamental rights that belong to every person simply by being a human being? Principles, universality, equality, nondiscrimination. Um, you, a lot of it is a backlash against World War Two and Nazi atrocities. And the United Nations founded after World War Two nineteen forty five to maintain peace and promote human rights. We create the Universal Declaration of Human Rights and it lists thirty human rights in that declaration. Freedom of speech under Article nineteen, everyone has the right to freedom of opinion and expression. This right includes freedom to hold opinions without inference and to seek, receive, and impart information, ideas through any media and regardless of frontiers. Freedom can be limited in case of slander, hate speech, and inciting violence, but only in some cases because the law also protects people against government trying to silence them. As is being tested very commonly today in terms of uh, law right. Article five, no one should be subject to torture or to cruel and human in degradating treatment or punishment. Inflicting severe pain or suffering, whether mental or physical, to get information or to punish. But obviously the US, you know, waterboarding, President Trump's statements on the issue. So more human rights, life and liberty, abolition of slavery, right to privacy, education, work, leisure. Um, not to be discriminated based on language, fair trial. So you have your categories of human rights. You have absolute rights can never be limited, such as slavery, torture, discrimination. Under no circumstance could those laws be taken away from people. If you're limited rights, that could be limited for certain cases such as liberty, wartime situations, uh, economic crisis, certain possibilities. Qualified rights can be limited in some circumstance, state of war, state of emergency war. So sorry, that was the limited rights. So human rights at home, England versus Wales, Human Rights Act nineteen ninety eight. This is in the United Kingdom. More in the United Kingdom, security versus privacy, Article Three, life, liberty, and security, government has to stop terrorists. Article twelve, privacy, family and home, and correspondence, governments can intercept your communication, similar in the US. Um, after nine eleven. Your continuing problems asylum for refugees, big issue in the, in current elections. Some people flee countries with terrible human rights, but they're not always welcome in other countries. Okay, so. You still there, Claire? Claire?
Yes, I do those. Yes, yes.
I mean, you can do those off. I'm not sure if you have anything you want to add.
Uh, probably.
Okay, so I'll just keep on going.
What are you saying? I missed that.
No, it's all right. Just keep on going. I'm, I'm just going through history of civil rights, definition, human rights. So I'll just go on to the Equal Opportunity Act unless you want to add something.
No.
Okay. I mean, you can sign off if you want, or it's up to you.
Okay.
Are you going to stay on or are you going to sign off? You're too tired.
I'm staying on. I mean, if you, if I just don't answer anymore, I might have fallen asleep.
Okay, so let's look at employment discrimination laws. So, you know, back here to Title Seven of the nineteen sixty four Civil Rights Act. Um, enacted to improve the economic and social conditions of women and minorities. Title seven is the broadest of the laws dealing with discrimination in many aspects of the employment relation and prohibits discrimination against employers or job applications on the basis of race, color, religion, national origin, and sex. Uh, Title Seven prohibits any practice or procedures which limits or adversely affects employment opportunities on the basis of protected classes, including advertising, testing, assignments, training, disciplinary action, layoff, recruitment, hiring, transfers, benefits, terminations, recalls, referrals, promotion, compensation, apprenticeships, and all other terms, conditions, and privileges of employment. This covers employers with fifteen or more employees. So retaliation, Title Seven prohibits any reprisals or adverse actions against an individual or a group of individuals because they have opposed discriminatory practices, participator assisted in any way in a change in a charged investigation or proceeding brought under its provisions. So there's been a number of executive orders issued that prohibit employers holding federal government contracts from discriminating against people on the basis of race, religion, sex, color, national origin, and age. As we mentioned before, executive order under Johnson one one two four six. Um, government contractors and subcontractors who do over ten thousand government business in one year are required to refrain from discriminating employment decisions such as recruitment advertisements, layoff termination, compensation, training, demolitions, and to engage in affirmative steps to ensure that applicants and employees receive equal employment opportunity regardless of race, color, religion, national origin, sex, or age. In addition, each government contractor with fifty or more employees and fifty thousand or more in government contracts is required to develop a written affirmative action plan for each of its establishments. Talked about affirmative action before, good faith efforts by employers to address past and/or present discrimination through a variety of specific results oriented procedures, actions appropriate to overcome the effects of past or present practices, policies, or other barriers to equal employment opportunity. Not preferential treatment should not unnecessarily trammel the rights of the non-minorities. Focus is placed on hiring, promoting, and training protected class members where they are underrepresented in an organization relation to their availability in the labor markets from which recruiting occurs. And this is voluntary as a result of conciliation or litigation or under federal, state, or local laws. So Civil Rights Act of 1991 is an amendment to Title VII, places a heavy burden on the employer to defend itself against charges of intentional discrimination, provides that employment practice that adversely impacts a protected class is unlawful if the employer cannot demonstrate that the challenged practice is job-related for the position in question and consistent with a business necessity, allows compensatory punitive damage awards in cases of intentional discrimination, and allows jury trials to determine the liability for and the amount of compensatory and punitive damages subject to established caps. And Frame Games went over the results of the Civil Rights Act of 1991 in detail. It was a series on the public space. The Equal Pay Act of 1963 is a major amendment to the Fair Labor Standards Act prohibiting discrimination on the basis of sex in the payment of compensation. Age Discrimination Act, 1967. Can't discriminate against people 40 or over in terms, conditions, or privileges of employment and compensation because of age. Pregnancy Discrimination Act of 1978. Vietnam-era veterans readjustment assistance acts of 72 and 74 protects Vietnam-era veterans, qualified special disabled veterans, and veterans who served on active duty for 180 days or more during a war or a campaign or expedition for which a campaign badge has been authorized. Prohibits employment discrimination requires employees with federal contracts or subcontracts of 25,000 or more to provide equal opportunity and affirmative action. Further Uniform Service Employment and Reemployment Act of 1994 prohibits employment discrimination because of an employment's employees or applicants' past, current, or future military obligation. So Immigration Reform and Control Act of 1986, passed to control unauthorized immigration to the United States and to deal with the problem arising from continued flow of immigrants. Immigration Reform and Control Act prohibits discrimination against any individual with respect to hiring and recruitment or the discharging of the individual from employment because of national origin or citizenship status. Individuals in this country illegally are not protected. The act also forbids employers to knowingly hire or recruit illegal immigrants. Rehabilitation Act of 1973 prohibits employment discrimination against qualified individuals with disability. Genetic Information Non-Discrimination Act of 2008 prohibits genetic information discrimination in employment. It's illegal to discriminate against employees because of genetic information. Title II prohibits the use of genetic information in making employment decisions, restricts acquisition of genetic information by employers and other entities covered by Title II, and strictly limits the disclosure of genetic information. The American Disabilities Act, 1990. Amending the Disability Act is amended in 2008, extends coverage of the Rehabilitation Act, expanded the legal responsibilities of employer as defined by the Rehabilitation Act and made it easier for people with disabilities to gain and hold employment, have easier access to public spaces, travel on public transportation, use public telecommunications service, and seek redress when the law is violated. The ADA covers physical and mental impairment that substantially limit one or more life activities. More, try to get through, I got a lot to get through, so people, you know, could pause and read this or find more information on it. Reasonable accommodation is any change or adjustment to a job or work environment that permits a qualified applicant or employee with a disability to participate in the job application process to perform the essential functions of a job or to enjoy benefits and privileges of employment equal to those enjoyed by employers without disability. When making a reasonable accommodation, consider the essential functions of the job. Qualifications of the person to perform the essential function determine whether a reasonable accommodation can be made for the qualified individual. You know, it should not be unduly costly, extensive, substantial, or disruptive accommodation or impose undue hardship on the employer. Arrestment. Hostile environment, but more regulations on employment as to they most of this thing, education and employment. To now the understanding diversity. What we call stereotype, oversimplify and overgeneralize groups of types of people, ignore individual differences, provide role expectations, inhibit development of authentic relationships among diverse people, prejudices make premature judgments towards a person or group of people, old views that make us unreasonable, unjust, or intolerant. Got Levy here. Yeah, I noticed that Frame Game seemed to have taken his stuff down. You know, these, this was kind of designed similar to Frame Games and just a discussion of what's happening today. I'm not sure if you want to talk about that. You could join the hangout, Levy, otherwise I'm gonna just keep on going over the stuff. I put the link in the chat if anyone is interested. I think Claire's in London and it's very late there, so she's asleep or that she might rejoin in. But yeah, if Levy, you want to discuss Frame Game, I noticed that he took his account to private. I have no idea what's going on with that. So more equal employment opportunity affirmative action, need for diversity. Who's protected? All racial groups, gender groups, people over 40, people identified with a national origin or religion or disability, racial opportunity for people of color, bona fide occupational qualifications, gender. Coming to two-parent families, single-parent families, same-gendered family, non-married families. All these are currently protected under law. And you'd see the Civil Rights Act going back to 1866, Equal Pay Act 63, Civil Rights Act to 64, amended in 67, further amended Rehabilitation Act in 1973, ADA Act 1990, Immigration Reform and Control Act in 1986. People have the right to waive their rights on equal treatment for responsibility, workman condition, seniority, merit quantity, or quality of production, education, skill, exception of non-citizen illegal immigrants. Cases, Griggs versus Duke Power Company disparity from non-relevant requirements. Disparate tests require validation. And then further, the pushback in the last decade of reverse discrimination in affirmative action. Legally, you have to show disparity between groups, show harm or loss to complaint, show membership in a class. To be confounded by evidence of prejudice, intent, or conspiracy, pattern of grievances, it has to be filed within 180 to 300 days after the event, and you must attempt an internal resolution first. Okay, I probably didn't prepare perfectly this this slides because I want to, I was gonna do this next week and prepare more, but Claire, I was talking to Claire and we just figured we'd do it tonight. And although she's fallen asleep, which is fine because it's early in the morning there already. So let's look at more equal employment opportunity. It's saying like you, this, there's so much legislation, acts, so many executive orders, congressional acts, local acts that have enshrined our current status in law. So what people are talking about, if they're not familiar with the law or what happened, it is the law, the government will enforce it. It would take quite a bit to push back what has already been enshrined in law. So obviously, the Declaration of Independence, we hold these troops to be self-evident that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. But unfortunately, or historically, that didn't apply to everybody. So you have the 13th Amendment, 1865, abolishing slavery, and the 14th Amendment. 15th Amendment, people aren't familiar with these. Unfortunately, in America, most people aren't, most people don't even know the first 10 amendments, let alone the later amendments afterwards. So that's why I'm doing this public study session. So people say like, this is the law, this has been the law for a long time. Your 19th Amendment, 1920, women's suffrage, 1964. The 24th Amendment prohibits the revocation of voting rights due to non-payment of poll taxes. 1971, the 26th Amendment, a voting age 18 years old. 27th Amendment. No congressional pay raises until election is passed, okay. Dred Scott, we discussed, Plessy Ferguson, Brown versus Board of Education. The Civil Rights Act of 1866, granted all persons the same rights as white citizens, as well as the right to enter into enforced contracts. 1971, granted all citizens the right to sue in federal court if they feel that they'd been denied their rights. Till the Civil Rights Act in 1974, I mean, 1964, under Johnson. The granddaddy of them all, so it's in the slides. Discuss this at Title I. Bars on equal application of voter registration requirements. Title II, outlaws discrimination based on race, color, religion, or national origin, hotels, motels, restaurants, theaters, and all other public accommodations engaged in interstate commerce, exempted private clubs without defining the term private. Title III prohibits states and municipal governments from denying access to public facilities on grounds of race, color, religion, or national origin. Title IV, encourage the desegregation of public schools and authorize the US Attorney General to file suits and enforce that act. Title V, expand the Civil Rights Commission to establish by the earlier Civil Rights Act of 57 with additional powers, rules, and procedures. Title VI prevents discrimination by government agencies that receive federal funds. If an agency is found in violation of Title VI, the agency may lose its federal funding. Title VII, the granddaddy of the granddaddy of them all, the biggest Title VII's, the most powerful act in the Civil Rights Act prohibits discrimination by covered employees on the basis of race, color, religion, sex, and national origin. Applies and covers an employer who has 15 or more employees for each working day in each or 20 or more calendar weeks in the current or preceding calendar year. Also prohibits discrimination against an individual because of his or her association with another individual of a particular race, color, religion, sex, or national origin. An employer cannot discriminate against a person because of his interracial association with another, such as interracial marriage. And then George Bush, 1991, Civil Rights Act clarifies burden of proof in disparate impact cases, addresses the right of US employees working abroad, prohibits race norming, eliminates use of mixed mode of defense in disparate treatment cases, allows jury trials and damage awards. That's what Frame Games talked about in the housing crisis that came from the legislation under President Bush. Protected classification, demographic characteristics cannot be used for employment decisions, race, sex, religion, color, national origin, age, disability, veteran status, pregnancy, genetic information. Bona fide occupational qualifications. Protected classifications can legally be used to make employment decision. Business necessity required to use protected classification for employment decisions. Business necessities when employment practice is essential to the firm's survival. Like actors. Disparate treatment, treating individuals different in employee situations because of membership in protected classification. At that point, sexual orientation was not protected. In view of adverse impact, employment practice results in members of protected class being treated less favorably than members of protected class even though discrimination was not intentional. When a neutral practice has unjustified adverse impact on members of protected class. And this has been through the Congress, through the President, through the judicial branch. All of them have enforced these codes. So equal employment opportunity is a condition which all individuals have an equal chance for employment regardless of their race, color, sex, age, disability, sexual orientation, and national origin. And federal government says constitutional amendments, legislation, executive orders, court decisions. A little flow chart about the development of these laws. Congress lobbies to address societal or economic problem. Laws passed enforcement agency designated to oversee compliance with law. Agency develops and communicates guidelines and regulations. Employees comply. Courts hear cases of violation of law or issues interpretation. So these laws have been in effect for decades, and there's been many court cases suing people who haven't complied. And you actually have enforcement agencies, the EEOC, Equal Employment Opportunity Commission, the OFCCP, Office of Federal Contract Compliance Programs, executive orders, court cases. So the EEOC investigates and resolves complaints against discrimination, gathers information, issues guidelines, monitors organizations' hiring practices. As said, complaints have to be filed within 180 days of the incident. And the EEOC has 60 days to investigate the complaint. The Office of Federal Contract Compliance Procedures is responsible for enforcing executive orders that cover companies doing business with federal government. Audits government contractors, ensure they are actively pursuing goals in their affirmative action plans. So there's been a lot of executive orders. We discussed Johnson before, you know, Kennedy, executive order establishes collective bargaining. Johnson, we discussed that prohibiting contractors and subcontractors from discriminating based on race, color, religion, sex, and origin. Even President Nixon required the federal government to base all of its employment policies on merit and fitness and not on race, color, sex, national origin, or religion. Labor laws, you know, Equal Pay Act 63, 67, age discrimination, 71, Occupational Safety and Health Act, 74, Vietnam-era Veterans Readjustment Act, Employee Retirement Income Security Act, 78, Pregnancy Discrimination Act, 1990, Americans with Disability Act. You would say like Ivanka Trump wants to push further the Pregnancy Discrimination Act. And, you know, so these could be amended and made even stronger. 1993, Family Medical Leave Act. 96, Health Insurance Probability and Accountability Act, known as HIPAA. 86, Consolidated Omnibus Budget Reconciliation Act, COBRA. 94, Uniform Service Employment and Redevelopment Act. 96, also Immigration Reform and Control Act. 2009, Lilly Ledbetter Failed Pay Act, from President Obama. Signed that. Okay. Let me just take a drink, see the links in the chat if someone wants to come on and discuss this. Otherwise, I'm just gonna continue with these slides. I got maybe like 20 more minutes, Levy, if you want to come on and discuss what happened with Frame Games. I was curious, I checked his Twitter and noticed that you had to be a follower or request to see what was going on in that, so I don't know what's going on with that. Just looking at the chat here. Yeah, I mean, if you saw earlier, Levy, I was just gonna declare like the, you know, how whites are going about, because these laws have been in place for decades. There's enforcement mechanisms, and if people want to change the nature of the laws, they're saying it's a long process above to repeal these laws or, you know, how they even consider going about it. Okay, so what's the legal environment for equal opportunity? You know, like liability, and Frame Games discussed this at length in the public space. So we have conflicting strategies for fair employment. So ideal behavior strategy, it's just people are gonna act the way that we want them to in terms of equal equality and treating people equally and looking at historical biases versus the affirmative action strategy, which the goal is fair employment. And we've already went over a lot of these quite a few times, you know, 1963 Equal Pay Act, merit pay, varying quality of work, quality of work, seniority plans, geographical regions. Those are possible, that you could pay people different amount based on those considerations. We discussed Title VII. Special protection, African-Americans, Asian-Americans, Latinos, Native Americans, and women. You have disparate treatment and disparate impact under Title VII of 64. So disparate treatment is intentional discrimination when an employer treats an employee differently because their protected status. And disparate impact is equal application of an employment standard that is on equal effect on one or more in a protected class. They're also referred to as adverse impact, which Frame Games discussed at length in terms of court cases. You know, disparate impact is constantly in the courts, and people, big companies could lose millions, hundreds of millions, even billions of dollars if they're sued and are found guilty. found guilty of disparate impact. So you have Griggs versus Duke Power Company, Supreme Court case, in which the plaintiff argued that his employer's requirements that coal handlers be high school graduates was unfairly discriminatory. In finding for the plaintiff, the court ruled that discrimination need not be overt to be illegal, that employment practices must be related to job performance, and that the burden of proof is on the employer to show that hiring standards are job-related. Discrimination by the employer need not be overt. Employee's intent is irrelevant. Employment practice must be job-related and valid. If it has an unequal impact on members of protected class, the burden of proof is on the employer to show that the employment practice is job-related. So if there is disparate impact, and the company tries to defend that it's the burden of proof is on the employer, not on the employee, hence the, all the lawsuits and the huge penalties they might face. So Albemarle Paper Company versus Moody reaffirmed the idea that any test used in the selection process or in the promotion decisions must be validated if it is found that the use has had an adverse impact on women and minorities. If the employer uses test to screen candidates, then the job-specific duties and responsibilities must be carefully analyzed and documented. The performance standards for employees on the job in question should be clear and ambiguous. Test must be valid predictor of job performance burden on employees. And you know, the equal opportunity, the federal commission guidelines on validation to be used for validating employment practices. Defense on discrimination cases, burdens of employee to prove there is a prima facie case. McDonald Douglas test to establish prima facie legally sufficient case of discrimination. The person is a member of protected class. Person applied for a job for which he or she was qualified. The person was rejected despite being qualified. After rejection, the employer continued to seek other applicants with similar qualifications. The burden of employee to prove there is a prima facie case restricted company policy, plaintiff proves that the company has a formal policy that restricts the selection of a protected group. Discrimatory remarks, plaintiff must produce evidence that certain biased remarks were made by the employee regarding the protected group. The four-fifths rule, the EEOC's official guidelines on employee selection procedures, a selection rate for any race, sex, or ethnic group which is less than four-fifths or eighty percent of the rate for the group with the highest rate generally is regarded as evidence of adverse impact. So here's an example of four-fifths rule, where if there's a disparate impact of more than eighty percent, they could be sued and liable to huge penalties. So here's how it goes. Business can show that the decision was made for job-related reasons. Bonafide occupational qualifications, requirement that employee be of a certain religion, sex, or national origin, where that is reasonably necessary to the organization's normal operation, argues all or nearly all authenticity, propriety, or safety defense. Formal seniority systems are permitted, must be well-established and applied universally. Defense created by the courts which requires an employer to show an overriding business purpose for the discriminatory practice, and that the practice is therefore acceptable. Like drug testing requires employer to argue that the remarks were not very derogatory, or that the person who made the remarks had no influence on the hiring decision. Talked about the Pregnancy Act of seventy-eight. Title Seven of the Civil Rights Act also prohibits sexual harassment, harassment on the basis of sex that has a purpose or effect of substantially inferring, interfering with a person's work performance or creating an intimidating, hostile, or offensive work environment. Employees have affirmative duty to maintain workplace free of sexual harassment and intimidation. So the Civil Rights Act of nineteen ninety-one, the burden of proof, once plaintiff shows disparate impact, the prima facie case, the employer has the burden of proving that the challenged practice is job-related. Officially prohibited any form of quotas. And damages, permits consummatory and punitive damages, makes it easier to sue for money damages in certain cases, and expanded coverage is amending the definition of employee to mean a U.S. citizen employed in a foreign country by a U.S.-owned or controlled company. Some of we've discussed these before, age discrimination, Americans with Disability Central function, covered this before. The executive order eleven-two-four-six monitors compliance with regulation, gives greater enforcement power to the government. So affirmative action programs aimed to redress past discrimination against protected classes and correct racial and gender imbalances in the workforce. Attempts to accomplish this aim through initiatives that are color-conscious. Some firms are under no obligation to implement affirmative action programs. It's affirmative actions implemented through two primary steps, utilization analysis, development of an affirmative action plan. Utilization analysis is statistical procedure that compares the percentage of each protected group for each job category within the organization to that in the availability, available labor market. If the organizational percentage is less than the labor market percentage, the group is classified as being underutilized. The affirmative action plan, AAP, affirmative action plans target the underutilized protected groups. AAP is written statement that specifies how the organization plans to increase the utilization of targeted groups. The AAP consists of three elements, goals, timetables, and action steps. AAP practice sometimes involves the use of preferential treatment. In order to do this, provide training, supervisors, managers, and executives, communication plan to employees, expanding commitment to discrimination, free work environment, complaint resolution procedures, document decisions in honesty. Okay, I'm gonna mute Claire here, because I think she may have fell asleep, so just to get rid of that. Sounds like she's snoring. Okay, muted her, I appreciate her being on, but obviously she's in London, so it's early in the morning there. In fact, I think I'm gonna have to just boot Claire, let her sleep. Unfortunately, I don't know how to do it, so I'm just ejecting her from it, you know, because I could hear her snoring, but I'm glad she joined in the conversation. And if anyone else wants to join in, the link is in the chat if you want to discuss some of the stuff we've been talking about. And I'm sorry, I had to eject Claire just because I couldn't figure out how to mute her and I hear her snoring, so I appreciate her staying up late to join this. And if no one else is coming on, I'm just gonna finish the slides I have. And you know, it's a public study session, the main goal of this was just to go over some factual elements of what brought us to the state of affairs we're in today. And if anyone has commentary on that, that's fine. I'm happy to allow them to voice their opinion. So re-enter screen share, and re-enter screen share here and continue. Okay, so what's the employment laws for federal contractors? And I'm in construction, like this is extremely, you know, like the Davis Bacon Act, and there's a lot to this, and anyone who's in any form of employment has to deal with this and has probably studied this. So the FDIC is the Federal Deposant Insurance Corporation. And FDIC recognizes the important contribution made by small veteran and minority and women-owned businesses to our economy. For that reason, we strive to provide small businesses with opportunities to contract with FDIC. In furtherance of this goal, FDIC has initiated the FDIC Small Business Resource Effort to assist the small vendors that provide products, services, and solutions. The objective of Small Business Resource Effort is to provide information and the tools small vendors need to become better positions to compete for contracts and subcontracts. To achieve this objective, the Small Business Resource Effort references outside resources critical for qualified vendors, leverages technology to provide education according to perceived needs, and offers connectivity through resourcing, accessibility counseling, coaching, and guidance. Where applicable, the product was developed with the FDIC Office of Minority and Women Inclusion. The AMWE has responsibility for oversight of the Small Business Resource Effort. So doing business with the government can be rewarding and profitable as long as you are aware of the employment laws that you must adhere to. There's several types of laws which federal contractors and subcontractors can significantly impact your work, or working knowledge of employment laws will help you avoid potential legal pitfalls. The U.S. has numerous federal and state laws and regulations regarding employee rights and employee responsibility. The law covers four broad categories, discrimination, fair pay, employment, privacy, safety in the workplace. Various government agencies enforce these laws, including the EEOC, Department of Justice, Department of Labor. Small businesses are exempt from some of these federal laws, but as a federal contractor or subcontractor, you must adhere to specific laws. So here we have your repeat of something we did here, number four, we talked about the Fair Labor Standards Act governs the following duration of the work hours, break, minimum salary, overtime. So we talked David Davis Bacon, McNamara-Harrow Service Contract Laws. Anyone in construction is definitely dealt with these. Americans with Disability Act, Section five oh three of the Rehabilitation Act. So we talked about executive order one-one-two-four-six already. So here we're gonna talk about the Office of Federal Contract Compliance Programs. The mission is to enforce for the benefit of job seekers and wage earners the contractual promise of affirmative action, equal employment opportunity required of those who do business with the federal government. The Office of Federal Contract Compliance Programs proactively audits federal contractors and subcontractors to ensure compliance. The OFCCP also enforces Section five oh three of the Rehabilitary Act of nineteen seventy-three, which prohibits discrimination against qualified individuals with disabilities in the affirmative action provisions of the Vietnam-era Veterans Readjustment Act prohibits discrimination against qualified protected veterans. Here's a nice chart of some, you know, so the EEOC doesn't perform audits, but they do respond to complaints and perform education and training, is where the OFCCP also performs audits, and penalty could include disbarment. So what's this mean? If you're a small business owner, if you're awarded a sizable contract with federal government agency, you must make your books and records available if audited by the OFCCP. For very small firms who are not currently subject to federal laws, you may have to make changes included but not limited to the following. Create, upgrade employee policies, procedures, and practices. Create and administer an affirmative action program. Create, update employee training programs. Become more knowledgeable about employment law and/or hire an attorney or human resource firm to help you become compliant. So six major guidelines to be in compliance, prevent discrimination from happening. Post-EEO posters in the workplace, include EEO tagline and employment advertising. Keep good records, permit OFCCP access to your books and records. File an annual EEO one report. The OFCCP recommends conducting self-audits to ensure that you provide equal opportunities to applicants and employees. Audit suggestions, assess your hiring, promotion decisions, have the impact to your numbers. Review job families in geography within your business. Where are there women and minorities? Where are women and minorities missing? Review your hiring practice, how are they affected women and minorities over longer time periods? So if your small business is already doing business with a federal agent of ten thousand, federal agency of ten thousand dollars or more a year, you need to visit the Office of the FCCP website, review the guidelines, listing actions you need to take to be fully compliant, perform a self-audit to see how your business is doing. So important to know, if you're opening a business, you want to be an employer, you want to have federal contracts, you need to be in compliance, and you know, their whole profession's guided around this, legal professions, and... So let's keep going. More about affirmative action. A lot of this is duplicates. This one dealt somewhat with Canada, I think that's why I included it, to talk about Canada. So in America, strong American commitment to political principles, egalitarianism, all men are created equal, individual and personal liberty, emphasis on freedom from government. We have the history of slavery, racism, and segregation, which Canada doesn't necessarily So a lot of this we discussed before, I'm just going through this. So equal employment in Canada. Canadian Charter of Rights and Freedoms. Every individual is equal before and under the law and has the right to equal protection, equal benefit of the law without discrimination, and in particular without discrimination based on race, national, or ethnic origin, color, religion, sex, age, or mental or physical disability. Subsection one does not preclude any law, program, or activity that has in its object the amelioration or conditions of disadvantaged individuals or groups, including those that are disadvantaged because of race, national, or ethnic origin, color, religion, sex, age, or mental or physical ability, meaning so to say, reverse discrimination or affirmative action is allowed. Nineteen eighty-six, the Employment Equity Act and Federal Contractors Act in Canada, amended nineteen ninety-five, applies to federal public services, federally regulated sectors, contractors with more than two hundred thousand in federal government or a hundred more employees. Five percent of the Canadian labor force meets the requirements to need to... So in Canada, you have Aboriginals, disabled, visible minorities, and women. You know, so employers are required to collect data on target groups, attempt to identify reasons where underrepresentation occurs, identify barriers to employment, implement plans to remove barriers, set own goals, including timetables for addressing underrepresentation. And that include job assignment, training, compensation, pay equity, promotion, terms and conditions of employment, workplace culture, and climate. So in Canada, no quotas, cannot be required to hire unqualified persons. Requirements cannot cause undue hardship, cannot be required to create new positions, and compliance does not mean having representative workforce. Means meeting the required steps to identifying potential barriers and making reasonable progress towards equitable representation. The enforcement, you have the Canadian Human Rights Commission that performs audits as of nineteen ninety-six, and penalties can include tribunal directives to cease discriminatory practice and fines. So what's the difference between affirmative action in the U.S. versus employment equity in Canada? Canadians are more familiar with affirmative action. Opponents of employment equity in Canada often refer to it as affirmative action, apparent reference to the severe division over affirmative action in the U.S. So affirmative action is usually associated with numeric quotas, as were equal employment equity quotas are extremely rare. Affirmative action in the U.S. is broader than employment equity in Canada, applies to a broader range of issues than in Canada, including university admissions. Although affirmative action could be narrow in some cases than employment equity in Canada. The measure is effectiveness by ratio proportion of workforce proportion of population, ratio of representation hiring to available candidates in workforce, necessary but not sufficient conditions, and vertical equity are disadvantaged groups represented proportionally throughout the organization, including upper levels or just at lower levels. So politics of employment equity in Canada have been significantly shaped by the politics of affirmative action in the U.S. Halsey's live now. The link's in the chat if you want to come on blue, or I only have, I'll probably be done in like twenty minutes with my slides here, I got five more. So there's equality and diversity. Equality is not about treating all people the same way, it's about recognizing and respecting diversity enough to adapt practice and procedure to suit it. The Equality Act of two thousand and ten, I think this is in, this is the United Kingdom. So here we're talking about the laws in England. So it's the single largest piece of anti-discrimination legislation the UK has known, harmonizes multiple pieces in primary and secondary legislation. Purpose of the bill and its accompanying package of measures is to strengthen protection, advance equality, and declare the law, introduce a new equality duty on the public sector, and age discrimination require transparency, extend the scope of positive action, strengthen reinforcement. And so in the UK, the Equality Act protects age, disability, gender, reassignment, marriage, and civil partnership, pregnancy, maternity, race, religion, and belief, sex, and sexual orientation. And so there's direct discrimination, indirect, associative, perceptive, harassment, third-party victimization, disability. So direct discrimination, person A directly discriminates against person B when person So direct discrimination, person A directly discriminates against person B when person A treats B less favorably than A would treat or would treat others in the same circumstances. It's indirect when a requirement is applied equally to everyone, but has the effect of excluding one group of people more than another. associative discrimination, less favorable treatment because of someone else's protective characteristic. So the Coleman versus Alteridge Law of 2008, this was in the UK. Sharon Coleman claimed managers at Attr's Law called her lazy when she requested time off to care for her disabled son. She accepted voluntary redundancy, but later brought a claim for constructive dismissal and disability discrimination. UK employment tribunal referred the case to the European Court of Justice to clarify European law. The ECJ ruled that able bodied people can be covered by the Disability Discrimination Act because their association with people covered by equality laws. Actually, I think these are EU laws that are enforced in England. So perspective discrimination, discrimination against an individual because of perception that he or she has a protected characteristic when he or she does not in fact have that protected characteristic. If an employer rejects the application submitted by a white man whom the employer wrongly assumes to be black because he has an African name. So harassment, third party harassment, unwanted conduct related to a relevant protected characteristic. In addition, employers can be legally liable for the harassment conduct of third parties. A third party would include a client, customer, supplier, visitor, contractor, service user. Victimization happens when individuals singled out because they have used the system to make a complaint or challenge treatment received. Disability discrimination. Okay, so I just wanted to include some of what's happening in the EU, you know, it's not just in the U.S. where this is happening. Okay, I included some immigration stuff in this too, just because it kind of goes together with the, the change in U.S. policy. So we see here dividing into four area eras from the creation of America till 1875, they call lazy fare, to 1920 selective restriction, 21 to 64 national origin quota to the current era, 1965 family reunification, skill preferences till the modern era. So the first era, minimal federal regulate, regulation, transportation of immigrants, you know, the Aliens Act of 1978, the Passenger Act of 1847, 1864 Commissioner of Immigration, which dealt just with how immigrants were transferred. 1882, then you, this new era selective restriction, the Chinese Exclusion Act of 1882. During their entire settlement in California, they have never adapted themselves to our habits, mode of dress or educational system, had never learned to sanctity of an oath, never desired to become citizens or to perform duties of citizenship, never discovered the difference between right and wrong, never ceased the worship of their idol gods or advanced a step beyond the traditions of their native hive, impregnable to all the influences of our ancient low Saxon life. They remain the same stolid Asiatics that have floated on the rivers enslaved in the fields of China for 30 centuries of time. That's actually Angel, University of Michigan, we have like Angel Hall and the man Angel was behind the Chinese Exclusion Act. You know, some more acts, the Contract Labor Law, Bureau of Immigration, Gentleman's Agreement with Japan, 1907, then the 1917 Immigration Act. So you're more acts, a lot of immigration history, I just wanted to include it because it goes together with the civil rights, you know, 1965 Immigration and Nationality Act, amendments abolish the national origins quota system, first come, first served, family and occupational preference, hemisphere quota, special individuals, labor certifications. Here's some family reunification, me and Brundle Fly had discussed this on a different stream. You have the Refugees Act of 1980, 1986 Immigration Reform Control Act, 1990 Immigration Act, flexible worldwide cap of 675,000. So Bush New Temporary Worker Program, 2004, American workers come first, employees must make every responsible, reasonable effort to find an American to fill a job before extending job offers to foreign workers. Workplace enforcement of immigration law enforcement against companies that break the law and hire illegal workers will increase. Economic incentives to return home, the U.S. will work with other countries to allow aliens working in the U.S. to receive credit in their nation's retirement system and will work to support the creation of tax preferred savings accounts they can collect when they return to their native countries. Fair and meaningful citizenship process, some temporary workers will want to remain in America and pursue citizenships, they should not receive an unfair advantage over those who have followed the law and they will need to be placed in line for citizenship behind those who are already in line. Those who choose the path to citizenship will have an obligation to learn the facts and ideals that have shaped Americans' history. The reasonable annual increase of legal immigrants, a reasonable increase in the annual limit of legal immigration will benefit those who have followed the lawful path to citizenship. Okay, so I got one more immigration. So I went over a lot of this stuff with Brundle, we talked about immigration, you know, in millions and up to the current era where we had a huge influx. When were people coming? Why were they coming? Who was coming? And obviously, you know, in 1850, Ireland, Germany, Great Britain, Canada and France. And today, most immigrants, Mexico, China, Philippines, India and Cuba. When America had a lot of open land, it was a different case. The colonization of the West, push and pull factors, involuntary immigration like African So we talked about some of these before, the Naturalization Act of eight of 1790. Quote is designed to reduce immigration from Southern and Eastern Europe, especially Jews and Italian, and prohibited the admission of aliens ineligible to citizenship, all Asians including wives of Asians already in the U.S. for the first time in history, immigration dramatically decreases. And then, you know, the Alien Act of 19, of 1798. Then you have the Chinese Exclusion Act we talked about, the more recent policies. So I'd like to go, maybe do a separate study session, but I wanted to include, this is Henry Ford, the Ford melting pot where Ford taught immigrants English and acclimated them to American culture in order to work here. And he actually had an event where he made a melting pot, you know, he pluralism, they called the Ford English School and they had a big event with a literal melting pot. So like melting pot simulation, discard old identity, adopt American culture, taste and habits, no longer feel ethnic or close to immigrant identity, or the salad bowl, pluralism, maintain old culture and identity, share common goals of the nation, what I call multiculturalism. So here you got some demographic data about immigrants, terms of education. You see Indians at the top, they don't have Jews separately on this from white people. And there's better statistics, I went over Brundle Fly, but I just wanted to include some stuff about immigration with the civil rights because they're related. Some hemorrhaging viewers, I apologize about this. But you know, public study session, all people are gaining from this. So let's look at citizenship rights. How citizenship is acquired and lost, you have naturalization, legal action conferring citizenship upon an alien, dual citizenship, the right of expatriation, the right to renounce one's citizenship, so it's American citizens have the right to live and travel in the United States, the right to travel abroad. So requirements of naturalizations, people would read through this, you know, equal rights under the law. Talked about a lot of these before, Dred Scott, reconstructionists, Jim Crow, slavery. Different Civil Rights Acts. The slow process that, you know, that we went, went over the long history of civil rights and leading up to the 60s until today, that whether even is changed to shifting to benefit non whites. The race and riots, Watson 65, Detroit in 67. Here's a nice history of women's suffrage in the U.S. compared to other countries. So the U.S. in 1920s has women's suffrage as where New Zealand, Australia, Norway had before, Saudi Arabia just had their women's suffrage recently. See the difference in the percentage of women working from like 20% before the Civil Rights Act till today, close to 60%. So a lot here, a lot to cover, you know, been at this a while, I'm losing my voice. So just going to try to finish this up. And what's my last one here? Here's Title Six, nondiscriminatory requirements, this came from New Jersey. There's a lot of stuff here, I might skip this. But, you know, the, anyone who's in employment field, you know, has to deal with this, people know like Title Six, Title Seven, there's a lot of stuff here, you know, I. Public study session was saying, this is just, we just touching these subjects. Any one of these could be the subject of multiple streams and anyone who owns a business that has more than a certain number of employees or does a certain monetary value or does federal contracts is very familiar with this. And if they're not, they're probably going to get sued and they're probably going to be put out of business. Delete these things from my desktop. Glad I did this public study session, glad we had a little crowd here. Glad Claire joined me, I'm sorry she fell asleep here, but that's fine. She joined me, I got one more on international human rights I'm going to show from the Raul Wallenberg Foundation and that'll be the last one I'm presenting here. So let me just check if anyone's in the chat. Historisti, I'm glad you're joining me. So let's look at my last slideshow. This one's a good one, I save it for last because it's a different format. Okay, so Raul Wallenberg Institute of Human Rights and Humanitarian Law from 2015. Culture, the whole complex of distinctive, spiritual, material, intellectual and emotional features that characterize a society or social group includes modes of life, fundamental rights of human beings, value systems, traditions and beliefs. From UNESCO's 1982. Culture that gives man the ability to reflect upon himself, it is culture that makes us specifically human rational beings endowed with a critical judgment and a sense of moral commitment is through culture that we discern values and make choices. All cultures form part of the common heritage of mankind, the cultural identity of people is renewed and rich through contact with the traditions and values of others. Cultures dialogue, the exchange of ideas and experience and the appreciation of others' values and traditions, it withers and dies in isolation. Culture diversity and pluralism, culture takes diverse forms across time and space, the diversity is embodied in the uniqueness and plurality of the identities of the groups and societies making up humankind and this all from the UNESCO Universal Declarations. It's our increasing diverse societies, it is essential to ensure harmonious interaction among people and groups with plural varied and dynamic cultural identities as well as their willingness to live together. All human rights are universal and indivisible and interdependent and interrelated, the international community must treat human rights globally in a fair and equal manner, on the same footing and with the same emphasis. While the significance of national, regional particularities and various historical, cultural and religious backgrounds must be borne in mind, it is the duty of states regardless of their political, economic and cultural systems to promote and protect all human rights and fundamental freedoms. It's from the Vienna Declaration. Cultural diversity as a human right, cultural diversity and the pursuit of cultural development by all peoples and nations are a source of mutual enrichment for the cultural life of humankind. All cultures and civilizations share a common set of universal values. Each culture has a dignity and value that deserve recognition, respect and preservation and convinced that all cultures form part of the common heritage belonging to all of humankind. What I call the universal brother of man. So the defense of cultural diversity is an ethical imperative and separable from respect for human dignity implies a commitment to human rights, any and fundamental freedoms, in particular the rights of persons belonging to minorities and those of indigenous peoples. No one may invoke cultural diversity to infringe upon human rights guaranteed by international law nor to limit their scope. The right to take part in cultural life, participation covers the right of everyone alone or in association with others as a community to act freely, to choose his or own identity, to identify or not with one or several communities or to change that choice, to take part in the political life of society, to engage in one's own's cultural practices and to express oneself in the language of one's choice. Applying limitations to the right of everyone to take part in cultural life may be necessary in certain circumstances, in particular in the case of negative practices, including those attributed to customs and traditions that infringe upon other human rights. The rights of minorities, Article 27. In those states in which ethnic, religious or linguistic minorities exist, persons belonging to such minority shall not be denied the right in community with other members to their group to enjoy their own culture, to profess and practice their own religion or to use their own language. So France, no one may in public places wear clothing that is designed to conceal their face, this is the hijab ban. Section two, public places comprise the public high where any place open to public or assigned to a public service, the prohibition shall not apply, authorized by legislation is justified for health or occupational reasons or if is worn in the context of sports, festivities, artistic or traditional events, any breach shall be punishable by a fine. Any obligation to follow a citizenship course may be imposed. So this was brought to the international court, the Francis Hijab Ban. The applicant was a practicing Muslim born in Pakistan, wore burka and niqab and lived in accordance with her religious faith, culture and personal conviction. She wore the niqab in public and in private, but not systematically, and she wished to be able to wear it when she chooses to do so. According to her, neither her husband nor any other member of her family put pressure on her to dress in this manner. She complained that since the entry into, into force of a law prohibiting the concealment of one's face in public places, she is no longer allowed to wear the full face veil in public. What these are, people aren't familiar with hijab, burka and niqab. So everyone has a right to respect for his private and family life, his home and his correspondence, there should be no inference by public authority with the exercise of this right except such as in accordance with the law and is necessarily in a democratic society in the interest of national security, public safety or the economic well being of the country for the prevention of disorder or crime, for the protection of health or morals or for the protection of the rights and freedoms of others. It's Article Nine, everyone has the right to freedom of thought, conscience and religion. This right includes freedom to change his religion or belief in freedom, either alone or in community with others and in public or private to manifest his religion or belief and worship, teaching, practice and observance. Freedom to manifest one's religions or beliefs shall be subject only to such limitations as are prescribed by law and are necessary in a democratic society in the interest of public safety, for the protection of public order, health and or morals or for the protection of the rights and freedoms of others. Article 10, everyone has the right to freedom of expression. The right shall include freedom to hold opinions and receive and impart information and ideas without inference by public authority and regardless of frontiers. Exercise these freedoms since it carries with it duties and responsibilities may be subject to such formalities, conditions, restrictions or penalties as are prescribed by law and are necessary in a democratic society if the interest of the national security, territorial integrity or public safety for the prevention of disorder, of crime, for the protection of health or morals, for the protection of the reputation or rights of others, preventing the disclosure of a public information received in confidence or for maintaining the authority and impartiality of the judiciary. So what about the burka case? Either she complied with the ban and thus Either she complied with the ban and thus refrained from dressing in accordance with her approach to religion, or she refused to comply and would face criminal sanctions. So everyone has the right to freedom of thought, conscience and religion, as we saw in Article nine. Freedom to manifest one's religion or belief shall be subject only to such limitations as are prescribed by law and are necessary in a democratic society, in the interest of public safety, for the protection of public order, health and morals, or for the protection of the rights and freedoms of others. So was the inference prescribed by law, whether the inference pursued a legitimate aim, realization of pressing social need capable to pursue the aim? Whether exists a reasonable relation or proportionality between the means employed in the legitimate aim pursued by the inference? Whether inference was necessary in a democratic society? Whether was not applied in discriminatory fashion? State have a margin of appreciation, but the court has the control of the conventionality. So blanket ban wearing in public spaces, clothing designed to conceal a face could be regarded as proportionate only in the context where there's a general threat to public safety, this context was not proved by the government, the need to meet minimum requirements of life in society is part of the protection of the rights and freedom of others, the justified respect for the minimum requirements of life in society guarantee the conditions of living together, so no justified based in respect for gender equality and human dignity. State seeking to seek, state was seeking to protect a principle of interaction between individuals as an essential for the expression of pluralism, tolerance and broad-mindedness, whether or not should be permitted to wear the full face veil in public places constituted a choice of society, France had a wide margin of appreciation. There was no European consensus as a question of the wearing the full face veil in public. So the court exercised a duty of restraint in its review of convention compliance, the control of conventionality assesses a balance that has been struck by means of a democratic process within the society in question. What's the margin of appreciation, which the national authorities are recognized as possessing and which reflects inner alea the notion that they are better placed to decide how best to discharge their convention obligations in what is a sensitive area, justify the width of the margin, namely the diversity of practice between the states on the issue of regulating the wearing of religious symbols and educational institutions, and thus the lack of a European consensus in the sphere. The court must seek to reconcile universality and diversity, and that is not its role to express an opinion on any religious model whatsoever. The decision whether or not to perpetuate a tradition falls in principle within the margin of appreciation of the state, Europe is marked by great diversity between states which it has composed, particularly of the sphere, cultural and historical development, the reference to a tradition cannot relieve a contracting state of its obligation to respect the rights and freedoms enshrined in the convention and its protocols. Further examples. Restrictions on the enjoyment of conventionally protected rights must be established by laws, be necessary, be proportional, and the purpose must be to obtain a legitimate goal in a democratic society, clash between private property and indigenous claims for ancestral property, the states must assess on a case-by-case basis the restrictions that would result from recognizing one right over the other. So American Convention of Human Rights nineteen sixty-nine, Article twenty-one, right to property, everyone has the right to use and enjoyment of his property, the law may subordinate such use and enjoyment to the interest of society, no one shall be deprived of property except upon payment of just compensation for reasons of public utility or social interest, in the case, cases and according to the forms established by law, usury in any other form exploitation of man shall be prohibited by law. Okay, so that concludes like the twenty slides I prepared. Enjoy doing this. Hope people gain from it, I'm not sure if anyone's still here in the chat. Oliver is mentioning Halsey's talking about the danger of the caravan, I'm not sure about that, I mean, that's a different case, and when I was talking, this was a public study session to see the law, and obviously illegal immigration, there is a case for refugees if they could legitimately show that they're refugees and fleeing something, or the case that's complicated is not directly covered by what we're talking about, but you could see the, you know, the law and how it applies. So let me, let me see if, I might pop onto Halsey and see, see his stream, and obviously me and Halsey don't agree so much on politics, but you know, I mean, I don't mind him, he's a, your right to his opinion relatively, I don't have any problem with him. We could agree to disagree. So unless anyone's got any questions, comments, someone wants to enjoy, you know, join in, I'm going to call it a night. I did this mainly from conversations I was having with Claire on Facebook and the response to other people, so I just figured I'd do a public study session, you know, rather than, you're just constant political talking head, you know, try to learn something. So I appreciate everyone who tuned in, I'm losing a little energy here, so shalom, blessings to everybody. Hope to do more of these, hope people gain from this, take care, blessings. I'm going to end the stream.